I call to order the meeting of the common council for February 1st, 2022. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Twelve members are present and voting, and twelve members are present in the chambers or at home.
Very good. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation led by a guest of Alder Brunet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alder Brunet?
Thank you. Mayor, I want to introduce Pastor Ku Lee. Pastor Lee is the pastor at Pilgrim Lutheran's Mung Service, a position he's held, am I getting feedback here? A position he held since 2008. He's been a member of the Pilgrim Lutheran family since 1976, when he arrived in Green Bay. He was an employee of Wisconsin Public Service for 35 years, which he retired from in June 2019, and he resides within the city of Green Bay. Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Bruce. And thank you for all the council members that are here. I'm very honored to be here and let us join together. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty Heavenly Father, we praise you and thank you, you, for this day as we gather here for the City of Green Bay Council Meeting. We asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Helping engage in every each individual of the City Council member is a meaningful discussion and guide all the City Council members to grow closer as a group and to nurture the board and bond of our community. Give them your grace that they may effectively do their part as a public servant. Bless their plan and project for you greater glory. All this we ask and pray in your son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
God bless you all.
On to approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlock, and that is to approve the minutes from the January 12 and January 18 meetings. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Those minutes have been approved. On to approval of the agenda.
Seconded.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlock. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the agenda has been adopted. Report by the mayor. Just a couple of comments on two items that we have before us this evening. One, on the request to allocate some of those ARPA dollars towards green infrastructure projects. I know we had a lengthy discussion at the Finance Committee. As a result, city staff, including Melissa Schmidt, Steve Grenier, and Matt Heckenleibel, I think did a really nice job providing a memo to City Council, so hope all of you had a chance to read through that. You know, this is now, at this point, a longstanding, pretty public commitment to supplementing the great infrastructure that we have in the city, in the Stormwater Utility with green infrastructure. And in addition to that, this will allow us to free up some resources within the Stormwater Utility to allow for enhancements to be made on the property of businesses and citizens throughout the city. I think we all understand that these flooding issues are significant and real, and the best way for us to address them is a multi-pronged approach with a lot of those, you know, traditional gray infrastructure projects, but supplementing them with some of these new innovations, both with large-scale green infrastructure projects, but as I said, with some of these citizen-led and business-led initiatives. So hoping that we'll be able to move forward with that request, recognizing the innovative approach that's been offered by city staff and the real needs that we have in the community. Also looking forward to a good discussion on our capital improvement plan. Not looking for action on the part of council this evening, really just a kind of a continuation of the discussion, the robust discussion that took place at our Finance Committee. I think like everybody, I saw the number and felt like it was a little bit eye-popping, but I think we all have to have a well-informed discussion of where that number came from, and really it derived here. City Council and myself have asked city staff to be clear and objective in the requests that they put forward, recognizing the infrastructural needs that we have. And it's our responsibility as policymakers to respond to that in an appropriate way, recognizing the fiscal limitations that we operate under. So I'm thankful to all of our departments for putting forward that document. Director Grenier and Director Ellenbecker spent a lot of time in particular, you know, working through that, and we'll continue to have those discussions and have them again at the Finance Committee and then our following council meeting. But just asking people to recognize what we've asked of our staff, and I think they've done a nice job in bringing that forward. Now it's our role to play in directing that. So with that, we'll move along to, I don't believe we have any recognitions and awards this evening. So on to appointments? Oh, my mistake. Announcements from council. Alder Dorf.
Thank you. The United Way of Brown County is doing an LBGTQ Plus Equity Challenge for nine weeks. Taking the challenge, if you choose to take that, will provide resources and education to you, and you'll increase your overall understanding of the LBGTQ Plus Community. It's an educational opportunity designed for everyone, and the LBGTQ Plus Equity Challenge runs from March 14th through May 9th. It is free. Registration is required, and it can be completed at the program website, which is LBGTQ Plus Challenge, all one word, and the plus is a plus sign, so LBGTQ Plus Challenge, at browncountyunitedway.org. Or just go to the Brown County United Way website, and it pops up first thing when you get on that page. So I've already signed up for the challenge, and I encourage you all to do the same. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other announcements? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, a dear friend of mine lost her son to addiction, and I think it's a reminder about this problem that continues to persist not only within our community, but through the state and our country. And the first thing that I want to recognize and acknowledge, of course, are those folks on the front line that work on this issue every day, our first responders, our healthcare professionals. You think of organizations like Darjean and the impact that they're having, our Drug Task Force, and I think it's important to recognize that no one is immune from this issue. And oftentimes, I think we kind of brush it off and say, oh, this only affects certain types of people that aren't like me, and the fact is, it's not true. It affects everybody in our community, and I think we really need to start driving community conversations around this issue because it is an absolute pandemic, and it is happening more frequently and more often, I think, than we care to discuss. And, you know, we need to find ways to fund, obviously, treatment. We need to find ways to deter situations that get people there in the first place. I believe our state officials need to demonstrate some courage. We need to stop imprisoning addicts. We need to treat them. And I think it's time that we also have conversations in earnest about the merits of legalization of other products that really don't contribute to a problem, and quite frankly, when you have the ability to regulate them, can have a much more positive effect on this situation that we currently are facing as a community. So obviously, this issue just happened to hit me closely because a dear friend was impacted by it, but I assure you that everyone in this room probably is being impacted by it, whether they know it or not, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to obviously express my condolences to the family of Sandra Rank, but also recognize that we all need to be a part of the solution. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder, for those comments, and sorry for your loss, for Sandra's loss, and we certainly extend our condolences from the city to her family. Other comments from council? Announcements? Seeing none, we will move along to reappointments? Motion has been made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell, to approve our two reappointments. Any discussion? Alder Scannell?
Just a quick shout out to Roger. He's been on the Transit Commission longer than I have, so, and he's a great, I'm glad he's sticking with it. So welcome back, Roger.
Great. Thanks, Alder. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, and those individuals are reappointed. Ordinance is second reading for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? We will use the board.
Just give me one moment. Okay, thank you, Alders. You may vote. And, okay, thank you. Here's your displayed vote. Oh, sorry. That is the wrong screen. Excuse me.
No problem. All right, and that ordinance is adopted unanimously, 12-0. On to the report of the Redevelopment Authority.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, and that report has been adopted. Improvement and services.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlock. Any items here to be handled separately?
I think it's the one what they will, the Pazer Report. Just have a quick question for Director Grenier.
Number two? Item two will be handled separately? Others? All right. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. That item was pulled by Alder Brunet.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm looking, I have too many windows open, so I couldn't quickly get to the one, but in regards to the Pazer Report, the street ratings that Director Grenier created, I had a concerned citizen, actually had a good idea, and I kind of thought of this in regards to the 12th District, but I think it would be beneficial to the whole city. We have the paper form of the Pazer Report, and that's very helpful so citizens can review that based on this meeting if they look at the minutes, but an additional measure for understanding just how good or poor our roads are as an aggregate, this person mentioned the idea of why don't we put that on a spreadsheet, I'm sure it already is in a spreadsheet, but make that searchable, either the city website or some sort of format so citizens can look. And then also, would it be interesting if each alder had access to their specific district, perhaps broken down, and also add up the score for each and every road throughout the city, and then divide it by the number of roads. That way, year after year, we'll be able to see how we're progressing, not just in the linear miles of roads completed or improved, but the average score. So for example, if the average score of roads in the city of Green Bay is, you know, 5.2, and then 2023 or 24, it goes up to 6.2, or, I mean, that's a pretty drastic increase, but at least we see some progress. So, long statement, but quick question. Director Grenier, is that possible? Have you looked into that idea?
Nobody has requested that, so we haven't looked into it. To provide information on the city website and make it a searchable database, I think would be relatively easy to do. To come up with some sort of an averaging metric, I might suggest that rather than divide by the number of streets, you divide by the length of the street segment to give it proper weighting, but that's a detail you and I can discuss offline if you would like to. In general, what you're asking for, I think, is achievable. The only problem that I see is the database we track the road segments in is not separated by alder manic district, so I think having something by alder manic district might be a little bit problematic, but we may be able to overcome that as well. It wouldn't be something we could do quickly.
Sure.
And just to interject real quickly, you know, one discussion that we have had internally with Director Grenier and in the past with Director Ronik is putting the map of all the ratings on the website, so I would imagine Director Ronik could chime in maybe to confirm that that would be a possibility, and also, and you know, if that's the case, then you have the alder manic maps that can be placed in there.
If only government could be this easy all the time. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I really am happy with Director Grenier, you know, creating this document. It's very helpful, and it's just a way for us to, you know, track the progress of the roads moving forward. So I'll kind of have this discussion with Director Grenier, the mayor, Mr. Ronik, and if we got to, you know, take any formal action as a council, I'll bring something forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. I'd also be willing to work on that as well. I've been involved with the Pazer Report over the last number of years, and I did put some things into alder manic districts. It took a little while, but I'm willing to look at that and work with whoever on this, with Director Grenier, Alder Brunet, and whoever, but I'd be willing to do that, and I think it would be a very important document, not only for council, but also for the citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, and the report has been approved. Protection and policy. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scannell. Items here to be handled separately? Number six. Any others? Item six will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item six. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Your wishes on item six. All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Alder Scannell.
I have some things I'd like to say about this, but before I get into that, I'd like to make a motion to open the floor. There are interested parties here. I think we could hear from them first. So motion, open the floor.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. The floor is open, so if we have citizens here who would like to provide some testimony, please approach the podium and just state your name and address for us.
Hi, my name's Melissa P. Gero. My address, 2491 Bittersweet Ave.
Great.
I am here with my partner Joanna Alberts. We own MJ Hospitality. We're here, and also my husband Ricardo P. Gero. We are here for our first time here with the city for a liquor license approval. We're hoping to open 708 Bodart Street, and we can answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Great. Thanks so much for being here, ma'am. Questions from council? Alder Galvin?
Do you own this building, or are you leasing it?
Leasing.
When you got the lease, did you know there was a moratorium?
No, we had no clue about the moratorium until the committee meeting last week.
So the owner of the building, did he know you planned on opening a tavern there?
Yes.
And he didn't make you aware of the moratorium? Is there any way out of the lease for you if this doesn't work?
It's contingent on this liquor license.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Alder Vanderleest?
Yes, thank you. At our committee, we talked about, this bar was in operation before, I think the previous tenant got removed from the premise of operating it, and I think you're looking to take over the premise as a new applicant as far as running the bar and opening the bar back up.
Yes.
And it's, that was what we talked about at our committee, and I know there was some 60-day lag, I think, as far as, that wasn't, in other words, you had a 60-day window, but evidently you didn't lease the property until February 1st. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I think there might have been some, you know, breakdown as far as communication that they wanted to open this business, that the previous person was removed from operating it, and I think that the person that owns the building had to find a new person to operate it, and they are applying for the liquor license, and it was a previous going bar at that point, and it's just a matter of changing ownership. And, you know, we talked about, you know, I know they have the moratorium. I think a lot of these moratoriums that are, they have an effect, some of them are outdated, you know, as far as the police, you know, calls as far as problem areas, we don't seem like we got a lot of problem areas down on Broadway anymore. You know, I think 15 or 20 years ago, it was, you know, every day occurrence, or every weekend occurrence. So I think that we should kind of take a look at, you know, having them, you know, get a little bit more time and give them a chance to open this facility. That would be my thoughts on it, and, you know, give them a chance to, you know, the city of Green Bay wants to partner with new businesses, and I feel that everybody should have a chance if they're going to open up a business that, you know, the city would try to help them, and that's my thoughts, and at the committee as well, but the moratorium part of it kind of plays into the factor of can we move forward in granting them their license? So as far as I'm concerned about their moratoriums, I'm not against bars opening up, you know, it's, you know, it's business in, you know, just a form of business, and so that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer, a question for our guest?
Yes. I think one of the problems that we had at committee, and I'll just talk to her about that, we couldn't hear her very well, so I'm hoping that we can hear her better today. It was a poor communication, so we had a hard time delineating some things. So I guess the question I have of the applicant is, the landlord, the landlord did not make you, didn't make you aware of the 60-day window. That's what it sounds like, and maybe he was unaware of it as well. So I think it was a bit of a communication breakdown. My understanding, well, I'm just wondering if that's it. Did the landlord, did you feel like the landlord did not give you the proper information?
Not about the moratorium, no.
You don't have to talk up.
Not about the moratorium. The landlord didn't mention anything, and nobody did until the committee meeting last week. Can you hear me?
Well, not just the moratorium, but the 60-day window that you had.
No, we weren't informed of that.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for her right now.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Another question from Alder Scannell?
When you were looking into starting this business, did COVID play a role in the timeframe of you opening your business?
Yes, we lived on Cherry Street for a while, and we looked at this business a couple years ago, but then COVID started, so we backed off because everything was shut down, and it wasn't a good opportunity, but now that things have settled down a little bit, we're hoping to start up again and be part of the new expansions that are happening downtown.
And could you give us a little information about your background in the area and why you're interested in developing the area there?
I can take that one. Hi, guys. It's a two-part.
You just want to ask?
I'm sorry? One?
Sure. And then if you'd like to speak, just say your name and address.
Sure. Well, my background in the area is, I am a nurse, and I was in psych nursing for a long time. I know that area has the homeless shelter down there and alcohol and abuse, abuse going on, and I can answer questions and help people with that information. We lived on Cherry Street for five years. We loved it down there. We like the area. We know new things are happening. My husband also worked at the homeless shelter for a while, I think three years, four years, so he knows the people and who to look for and where they're coming from. So, would you like to say anything? I can.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Any other members of the public like to say anything?
Sure. My name is Joanna Alberts. I am the other partner of MJ Hospitality, 1024 Goodell Street. There's a lot of really great things that are going on in that area that we have equal parts of interest in. Obviously, the real estate of that area is a bar. It's never been a restaurant. It's not designed to be anything other than that. While we weren't necessarily informed of the moratorium and the rules that were instated, at this juncture, I'm not sure that the landlord was either. So it's a two-part communication issue, which Alderman Vanderleest has addressed, and at the end of the day, we're very aware of that area, what it needs, how the development is going, the potential for it, but we're also independent business owners who made it through COVID pretty well. So we aren't going into this as a fledgling business that doesn't understand that there are budgeting issues, there are fiscal issues that come along with, you know, starting a new business. Like I said, we are business owners already, so we're fortunate enough to come into the table, you know, with a budget that was predestined for us to be able to spend to better our community and our own livelihoods.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Alberts? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Gerlock.
Wait, wait, wait. There's more.
Mr. Merkis, come on up.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Jeff Merkis, I'm Executive Director of Old Main Street Incorporated, 130 East Walnut Street in Green Bay. I just wanted to share with you that I've had an opportunity to review the plan. I am aware that the Green Bay Police Department has reviewed their security plan and is comfortable. We are dealing with a responsible property owner, and there may have been some naivete or uncertainty about the moratorium and the 60-day rule. However, this really doesn't apply to the applicant. These are new business operators that want to open a business in our community. From what I could gather regarding their background, these are long-term citizens of our community, held responsible positions. This is a property that's located in the Old Main Street District, and we have a very responsible property owner as well. This building is set up for hospitality. That is the best use of this space. It has been vacant for the past six-plus months, and we would like to see an operating business. I can assure you that my team and I, this is a business we want to support. We want to welcome them to the district. We want to help keep them accountable, to run a good establishment, and I have every level of confidence that they're very capable of doing that. So I realize there are some complexities. I appreciate the work of a number of the alders that have been digging into this and working with our staff, but I would like to offer my support and encourage you to support the approval of the liquor license, and I'm confident that we'll have a quality business on Bodart Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Your Honor. I believe Don Melody would like to speak.
Mr. Melody, go ahead.
Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the council.
Don Melody, 840 South Broadway. Hello, everybody. I'm Don, President of the Brown County Tavern League. I'm here to speak on behalf of them. They stopped and talked to me while applying at this location for a license. I've already known of Ricardo. He's been a successful tap cleaning service in town for quite a long time. He's been in the industry. He knows a lot of responsible bar owners in the area. I've heard of nothing but good things about his character. I think this would be a good business in addition to the area with responsibility given to the opportunity to contribute positively towards our community. I just ask you all to make a motion to reverse the moratorium for this instance, and that's it. I thank you guys for your time.
Thanks for your testimony. Any other comments, either online or in person?
Motion to close the floor?
Okay. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Just to clarify the motion real quick with Alder Scannell, it was a motion to approve the application?
Yes.
Okay. Alder Dorf.
Thank you, mayor. So I agree with a lot of what Alder Vanderlees said. I believe that the moratorium had its place. If you notice, that you did get a copy of the moratorium in your email. I spoke with Clerk DePries, and she sent that moratorium out to all of us to look at. And at some point in the near future, I'd like us to take a look at that in protection and policy and see if we maybe want to revise that. But it's the way it is right now. And my belief is that when I was on protection policy, our role was to look at the law, to look at what police recommended, to look at what our staff recommended. But then it was up to us on protection policy to make a decision. And if it was within the spirit of the law, and I believe this one is, then if I were on protection policy today, I would be voting yes to approve this application. And so I will be voting yes to approve this application. I think there's some good reasons to do that. We've heard them all tonight. So, thank you. That's all I have to say on that right now.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary and then Alder Gerlach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I watched the meeting, and I have come to the conclusion, I, you know, it's replace an existing bar. You know, these have been stated before. We have extra liquor licenses. The applicants have a solid background. We've heard from the director of Old Main and downtown. They're in favor. The police department has no concerns. So I have no problem supporting the new business and overriding the moratorium. So, thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach?
Just a question, because here we go again. This is the first time I've ever faced a moratorium. Is there any reason that we cannot approve this license because of the moratorium?
No, but I'll have Attorney Bungert weigh in, just on the force of the moratorium and how it sits in our law.
Yeah, so this particular moratorium is set by resolution. We do, I believe, have one, if not two, moratoriums that are set by ordinance. And those are not discretionary, those we cannot set aside. But ones that are set by resolution are not compulsory. So essentially, a resolution just sets forth an adopted collective agreement of the council to have certain parameters set with respect to issuing liquor licenses within a certain area and setting forth certain conditions. So certainly, it's up to the discretion of council whether they want to continue following a resolution for one particular item, or whether, you know, a resolution needs to be repealed and replaced with something else. But there is no, the council isn't bound to the terms of its own resolution.
And then a question about, I don't quite understand the way this is worded. So it, the committee is recommending that we deny an application. So when Alder Scannell moves to approve, is he moving to approve the application, or is he moving to approve the denial? I just have to know what...
Yeah, I did clarify that with him. So he is, his motion was to approve the application.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Yep. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. I fully support the approval of this application as well. You know, I remember a conversation Alder Scannell and I had leading up to this meeting, and, you know, we talked about how obviously, you know, we're just trying to, the committee was more or less trying to make a decision within the confines of the law, the law being the resolution. But I would just remind council that we make the law, and we can do that today by simply approving this application. You know, we've approved these several times in my tenure here on council. This is the first time, actually, I can recall us having any lengthy conversation about it, for whatever reason. So I think at the end of the day, what we have here is a technicality. That technicality being, you know, the previous license wasn't handled within that 60-day period. In fact, there's a provision within the moratorium that they can make or issue an appeal to extend that 60 days. I'd rather not make them go through that process. Let's just handle this today. Let's take care of it. I think, you know, you have a sound proposal here with experienced business owners, and I just hope that we can discontinue this practice of denying licenses or other requests related to alcohol, simply because we've viewed clickbait claims that Green Bay is this or Green Bay is that. I hope we're beyond that, and that we're, we talk about science all the time. Let's make these decisions rooted in science. And what we have in front of us right now is a business owner who wants to operate in the city of Green Bay, and we have a vacant property that, quite frankly, is built for this purpose. And if we don't approve this license, it will remain vacant. Which would we rather have? I'll take an operational business. Thank you, mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Yes, I agree with Alder Johnson there that, you know, the business is, the building is made for this business, and that's the only kind of business you're going to have there unless you knock the building down or do a major gutting or whatever. So I, and I think, for me, we can make an exception here. I think there are many factors, but I think, one that I think we've taken into account in the past is COVID-19. I mean, that has really made a mess of a lot of things. And I think, given their situation, I have no problem using that as an exception for this place. I think it's a, they're a good business, and they'll be good for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments? We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Alder Stoyer, and then Alder Lefave?
Thank you, your honor. Like has been mentioned before, we spoke for quite a bit of time on this at committee level. And our committee, I think, over time, has done a pretty solid job of looking at various applicants, whether they're looking for a license or for looking to approve a bar license, et cetera. The problem that came up was the lack of communication. I think that the landlord kind of dropped the ball on this one. And like I said, there were a couple of things that could have gone better. Recently, got a few emails. I've also talked to a few of the other Alders. I feel fairly confident that this will work. So I had originally voted against this for some of the reasons that were brought up before. So I'm fine with it. I appreciate the dialogue. But again, like I said, our committee, I think, took a long time to take a look at this. And we were trying to include the resolution as well, but as according to Attorney Bungert, you know, it sounds like it's not held as in high esteem, if you will, as an ordinance and such. But I think, I think that'll be good. So I changed my vote on that, and I would vote to approve the license. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Lefave?
No, I won't change my vote. The reason is, we have a moratorium. Let's follow the rules. And unfortunately, I'm, yes, I feel for these people because they thought they could open a business there. But I'm sorry, you're pretty naive. You think the business owner, that he didn't know about the moratorium? He knew. And I heard someone tell me that he's done this before. So let's, there's a reason for a moratorium. People wanted to put it in place for a reason. I think it's, I'm sorry, I'm really upset that some people say, well, let's just get rid of the moratoriums. Why? Why? Why do you want to get rid of the moratoriums? Do you remember my speech I gave last time? Come on, let's be honest. We don't have a good reputation regards this. You want to do a new motto for our logo and all that for our city? What's it going to be? So, no, I'm still going to vote no because it's the moratorium. And you can be honest, and let's just say you want to get rid of moratoriums. And I know these people were caught with the moratorium. They didn't know. And that's, that's crime. That should be, that's terrible that somebody would do this to somebody because they thought for sure that they could open their business. I do feel for them. Not against business. But I'm saying we have a moratorium. Once you open up the door, well, then you might as well, yeah. Just, why don't you just, somebody make a motion just to get rid of the moratorium because there won't be one anymore. Because you know there's going to be others who are going to come forward and say, oh, give me an exception too. You gave it to someone else. So I'm sorry, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Galvin?
Thank you, your honor. I was part of the police process that asked for and was able to get the city council to listen and institute the moratoriums. At the time when it was asked for, our liquor establishments were, for the most part, many of them were out of control. Have you looked at the amount of police calls for service on Bodart Street, Washington Street, Broadway Street? It was tying up a lot of police and rescue squad resources and other city services. And that was the reason for the moratoriums. As time has passed, I don't see that anymore. I'm not hearing reports from the police department asking for council help with unruly or establishments that aren't being operated properly by the owners. And I think that's a positive. I think it shows that the police, doing their business plans with the establishments, stopping in with compliance checks that I just saw on the news that they're starting up again, I think it shows that things have gotten turned around. And in hindsight, probably, the moratorium should have been put in place with the ability to have a sunset clause, to have them review it and maybe remove if they're no longer needed. I mean, if you have laws that aren't needed, you need to get them off the books. There's no reason just to keep it there just because. So as I started out saying, we had problems. I think a lot of those problems are gone. I think that the taverns are being operated, for the most part, responsibly, and I think the police department is on top of it. And if they thought things needed to change or actually needed to be taken, we would have heard it at council by this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell, for a second time?
Just one thing. Yeah, thank Alder Galvin for a little bit of background there. Actually, not tonight, but I do plan on putting in a communication about the moratoriums. I mean, I would like to know, you know, when were they instituted? Why were they instituted? How have they been working? Have they been working the way we want them? Do we still need them? I think there's a lot that the current council can look at here to make some decisions going forward, whether we should rescind or amend or leave these moratoriums alone or not. But I think it's time to take a look. They've been on the books a while. Let's see, let's get the background on it, and let's see how they've performed and if they're still necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea. Any other comments? Alder Vanderlees?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to make a comment that protection and policy, we take these cases as they come in. In other words, we give everybody a, you know, a chance to speak, and we weigh on what's put in front of us as a committee. And I voted for it at the beginning. In other words, I was the only vote that wanted to move forward on it. But I think that, you know, as we got more information, that I think the council can definitely okay this application. This is what's on the table for tonight. I'm not talking about the moratorium and all that. I think the staff has to look at that and, you know, bring it back to the city council and go from there. But I think for what we're talking about tonight, I think we should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Nay.
I don't believe so. Attorney Bungert, is there a particular threshold on this vote, other than majority?
No, it would just be a regular majority, yes.
All right. So we have a majority voting in favor, and that motion succeeds. Thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate your attendance. To report to the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any abstentions? Her name is to be held separately. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
The ayes have it. That report is adopted. Plan Commission?
Motion to approve?
Made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
The ayes have it. The report has been adopted. Finance? Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any items here to be handled separately? Five? Two, three, and four. All right. Items two, three, four, and five will be handled separately. Hearing none, others? All in favor of approving the remainder of that report? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
The ayes have it. The report has been approved, the exceptions of items two through five. Your wishes on items two? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. The item was pulled by Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I'm sure everybody here did, if you didn't sit through it, you watched the finance meeting. It was a pleasure to watch. Not. If you add up two, three, and four, it comes to almost $1 million, $990,000. And these are items that, the goal, their concepts in the first two, the goal is to study data to see if it's an effective design. It's a lot of money to explore whether or not we want to use that type of roadwork in the future. As we saw, you know, if you watched the finance committee and our list of things we need to get done in the city is quite lengthy, not only this year, but in the coming years. A lot of money. Those are basic things. Roads that need to be replaced, roads that need to be repaired, fire trucks, police cars, dump trucks, parks that need attention. A lot of issues, a lot of items. Those are all basic needs. I would rather these three items, we not approve tonight, build that road as we normally would, take that $1 million and put it towards the basic needs, not things from an expensive wish list. I mean, we could buy all 15 police cars and a fire truck with that money. So do we want to build, do we want to buy 15 police cars and a fire truck, just as an example, roughly? Or do we want to do this, these programs that may work? We won't know till they're built, until we studied, if we want to use that. I think that's a very poor use of money, very poor. I know these are things we might want to look at in the future, but not now. Not if you watch that finance committee, not if you look at what we need. Now is not the time to be dabbling with that. It's very irresponsible for anybody who votes for that. So I'd be interested to see what others say, but this one, I'd vote to receive and place on file.
Just a point of clarification. We can't use ratepayer dollars from the stormwater utility to buy police cars.
I just use it as an example. We could use it towards roads.
No, we could not.
It was my understanding, asking Director Allen Becker, that we could use this money towards other items.
No, not this particular pot of money.
Well, I'm sure there's something more basic that we can do with it than a pie in the Sky Project that might not even work. So I would vote to receive and place this on file. It's not needed, not necessary, not right now.
Again, to clarify for council, it can be used for stormwater purposes.
But not this.
Other comments? Alder Dorf?
So I am in favor of this item and the other two. I don't know if we're taking them as a group, but Alder Weary mentioned the other two, so I'm going to mention the other two as well. We've seen in this city over the past few years, serious effects of the changing of the climate, the serious storms, the serious flooding. And as a city, we've made a commitment to work hard on, at our level, doing what we can to improve and sustain the climate, the water. We're trying to do as much as we can to ensure that the runoff from the farms, that the runoff from these serious storms is contained so that our residences don't flood. We need to take some steps in order to make sure that our, we have some support for climate control and for some controls to put in place. Many, many of these climate controls are new. We're not going to have a history, a long history of data, because they have not been around for a long time. Our staff, which I trust, studied what are some things that might be able to work, and for example, using the permeable surfaces for one of the reports, I think that's the second one. For the one that Alder Weary had brought right now, it is the, hmm, it's not the rain barrel project. The biofiltration system we're talking about right now, installed in the street terrace. And for those people that don't have this in front of them, this is designed to filter the mixture, media mixture contained in landscape concrete, contained in a landscape concrete container. The filter media captures and immobilizes pollutants. And those pollutants are decomposed, volatilized, incorporated into the biomass of the system's micro, macro, fauna, and flora. That's pretty technical, right? But it's clean enough. It's not talking about capturing things that don't belong in the water and cleaning them up so that they don't go back into our stormwater system. We have to start somewhere. I believe this is a good place to start. This is absolutely a good use of ARPA funding, and I'm very much in favor of it, and I will be voting yes on these items. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
Wanting to clarify, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Alder, who spoke against this?
I just want to make sure I understood him. Did he say that we're spending $360 on gathering information? Was that, did I misunderstand that?
Alder Weary, do you care to respond to that?
Wonderful question, Alder Scannell. I will refer to an email from Director Grenier. Bear with me a moment.
And Alder Weary, did you make a motion to receive and place on file?
I did.
Was that seconded?
Your honor, that motion was not seconded, from what I heard.
Seconded by Alder Brunet.
Sorry, it's taking a little long here.
While you're searching, Director Grenier, could you enlighten us?
I did find it. "In developed areas, we really can't be installing ponds, so we're left with biofilters, permeable pavement, and the like. Our hope with these projects is to start developing data on exactly how effective these efforts are with the intent of refining our approach before doing a lot of them across the city." Sort of a start small, learn lessons way of doing it. So, I take that to mean we're not quite sure. It's not for definite, this will improve it. We're like, well, it might, a little bit, might a lot, we're not sure. And I do have an email from Director Allen Becker that says we can reallocate any of these funds towards whatever we want. So...
I can invite Director Allen Becker to weigh in, but that's not a proper characterization. Director Grenier?
Yes, yes, thank you, mayor. Again, I've had this conversation with several people since the finance committee meeting. With technology, again, the technologies that we are proposing to utilize the ARPA funding on are what we consider to be tried and true. Biofiltration has been used across the country, around the world, I would say. As a matter of fact, when we did the Webster Avenue project here in Green Bay a couple of years ago, the center medians are designed to be a large biofiltration. That's the stormwater management that was implemented on the Webster Avenue project. What I mean by the build and refine, when you're using proprietary-type devices, like the biofilters we're looking at on these two projects, they're, the data that's published by the manufacturers of these devices provide ranges. So, what we're looking to do is to get some better empirical data to find out where within the range. It's not that we're concerned or have doubts as to whether the device is effective or not, it's what is the effectiveness? So, then we can start assessing, based on the results we get on the first projects we're doing, is this applicable in this type of an environment, on another type of street? Is it better or worse in a closed, or in the center of the city where you've got high tree canopy? Is it better suited outside where it's not as developed? That's what I mean by develop some of that data. Relative to whether or not we feel the devices are going to be, are going to perform or not, that we're not concerned with. Again, we're not looking at implementing the flavor of the day in stormwater management. The devices or the approaches that we've selected are tried and true technology that have been in use for several years. Yes, this is at a concept level. What I mean by that is we have not sat down and physically developed the specifics for the asphalt mix that'll be used as part of the permeable pavement. That's an individual design relative to the biofiltration. We know we want to use biofiltration. We haven't designed the physical size of the biofilter, what plants will be planted in that biofilter to properly capture the precipitation runoff within the streets. So, that's what we mean by a concept. If I was not clear in that, then I apologize for my lack of clarity.
Thanks, Director. Alder Scannell, and then Alder Brunet, Alder Galvin.
The motion reads to approve contingent on receiving additional information from ARPA, about the ARPA. What information, do you have any specifics on that?
There's a memo that was produced. It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in there. I don't know, but it's in the packet, and it was written by Melissa, Steve, and Matt.
Truly, it's there.
Oh, understood, okay. Alright. Then, I'd just like to hear from Director Allen Becker, and I'm good to support this, I think.
Okay, well, in terms of the ARPA funding, we just adopted a resolution as a council. I think you all recall that. $23.7 million was what we received as a city. We developed a framework, it was approved by our common council, so that's what we're operating under. So, there, you know, there's the $3 million allocation for stormwater purposes. This bit of spending is coming out of that category of spending. Alder Brunet?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. The $3 million, which I voted for, by the way, was for stormwater, green infrastructure, and climate resilience. When I think of those things, I think of a lot of things, but overwhelming concern for me in this city is flooding. Now, I do not live in a district that has substantial amounts of flooding, although there has been some flooding due to the condition of some of our storm sewers. So, when I hear climate resilience, I think, good lord, let's help some of these people that are dealing with substantial amounts of flooding in our neighborhoods, specifically Fox River and East River and some of our other communities. So, I think, and the reason why I voted for the $3 million to this category, was I thought that we could also improve storm sewer management, but we could also alleviate some flooding. That's an issue we're dealing with right now. We had a pot of $3 million to improve stormwater but also alleviate flooding. These projects, these three projects of $990,000, for me, does not even move the needle on flood management in this city. They could contribute to some, but it's really two projects out of six that Mr. Matthew Heckenleibl, who works for the city, this is his area, this will be a continuation. I do have a question for Director Grenier, and then I'd like to kind of finish my comments because I support the motion, I seconded, obviously. Director Grenier, when we had substantial amounts of flooding along Mason and Main, which really made front-page news for, you know, several major storms, the city council improvement and service committee asked you to complete a report as to what we could do for infrastructure to alleviate some of the flooding. And you came up with a lot of really good ideas, including retention ponds, underground reservoirs, you name it. You came up with a very good list of projects. But you stated that even if the city did all of those projects and spent tens of millions of dollars in these major storms that we had been having, you said that the amount of water, standing water, that all those projects would reduce would be an inch or two. Is that correct? Do you recall that conversation?
Based on, excuse me, based on the different options that we had provided, there was a range of different impacts that would have been realized. There were some of the options, the lower-cost options that we had brought forward, lower-cost being a relative term, that were going to be less effective. Some of the larger dollar, the $30 million or so, options that we had proposed would have had a greater impact. And if memory serves, that was going to be in the eight to 10-inch reduction range. But again, depending on how many of the recommendations were implemented, the more implementation, the more recommendations implemented, the greater effect it would have had.
Okay, would you agree that when a person thinks of climate resilience, they could think of flood remediation and solving flooding issues?
I think that's up to whoever, you know, for as many people as are reading something, you could get that many different interpretations.
Your professional opinion, Director Grenier?
My professional opinion, when we're talking about stormwater, green infrastructure, and climate resilience, that's pretty much the whole gamut.
Which includes flooding.
It could include flooding, it could include the green infrastructure that we're discussing tonight. That's, I think the category is broad for a reason.
But it could include flooding. Okay, I take that as, yes. Okay, thank you. So, we have $3 million, okay? That's a lot of money. There are a lot of projects that this city council could approve that would fit stormwater, green infrastructure, and climate resilience to address the immediate issue that a lot of these families are dealing with along the East River and the Fox River. Every single storm, every single major weather event, these folks are terrified of having water in their basement. And my point is, it's not that I'm against green infrastructure. I love the idea. The reality is, we don't have a comprehensive plan similar to what Director Grenier created for the stormwater, I'm sorry, the flooding issues and the underground reservoirs and the retention ponds. We came up with a really conclusive list of projects, and we determined as a council, it's not worth spending, you know, three or four, 30 or 40 million, or whatever the amount was, to eliminate flooding of a few inches, up to eight inches or 10 inches, as Director Grenier said. So, my problem with these specific green infrastructure projects, just the two of them, is that there is no data, there are no figures that we can point to that says that this will alleviate any flooding issues whatsoever. If we had that conclusive plan, if we had a plan in front of us that said, okay, moving forward, the goal of this city government is over the next 20 to 30 years, or 10 years, or five years, these are the amount of green infrastructure projects we want to work on, and this is the end result. This is going to improve our stormwater, it's going to improve our quality of stormwater that goes into the bay and the river and our groundwater. This will alleviate flooding to this level. A comprehensive plan, we can't just piecemeal two to three to four projects and think it's going to have any effect on the major issue in this city, and that's floodwater. I love the idea of green infrastructure, but the reality is, these green infrastructure projects cost a lot more than the traditional gray infrastructure. We can work towards these things, but if we do it a piecemeal approach, and come spring, when people's homes are flooded again, we can say, we had $3 million, and we did two green infrastructure projects for $990,000, and we did rain barrels for $60,000. If we don't have a clear plan, I cannot support this. I want to spend the $3 million on something that will take care of many of these things, but namely flooding. Let's just not forget that. If we do this piecemeal, and the public isn't aware of how much green infrastructure will cost us year after year after year, these projects could turn into boondoggles, and we have no idea what the net effect is on the major issues in this city. So, I'm against the, I'm not against spending the money. $3 million is wonderful, but on these three projects, I want to have some alternatives on what we could spend those funds on to work towards the end goal, which includes reducing flooding in this city. Thank you.
Alder Galvin?
Thank you, your honor. I was, I'm on the finance committee, and I was at that meeting, and I was pushing Director Grenier pretty hard for some answers. If we're going to justify this expenditure to our constituents, we need to tell them what it's for, how it's going to work, and what the results are going to be. We've bought electric or gas and electric vehicles. You can point to data that if we use this vehicle as much as we use just gas-burning vehicles, we'll save X amount of gallons of gas per year, we'll reduce X amount of carbon pollutants into the air per year. And that's what I was asking for. That's all I was asking for. I don't see that in this memo. And if these GI programs have been used worldwide, I would think that there would be some kind of data to show how effective they could be. I mean, and obviously, different climates, different areas, you're going to have different results, depending upon the type of ground, you know, the makeup of your earth and everything, the amount of water you get. I mean, there's just a lot of things I know that go into that. That's what I was looking for, and I don't see this here. I support GI, I do. I live in the district that's getting flooded. I have the sump pump that runs continuously all summer long. I have the neighbors that had a pond develop over four properties wide every year, till one of them put in a mini storm sewer in their backyard at a cost of $8,000. I had the neighbors calling and crying and yelling at me on the phone when their homes were flooding. And the city has worked on it, I got to admit. They put in the new pump at the end of Eliza Street, which has alleviated a lot of the problems. And a lot of the problems we have are environmentally related, and they're also related to projects that were done by the city and by private developers that hurt our environment, and we're paying the price for it now. And I want to see our use of these monies to be used for things that are going to have an impact. I mean, and I understand we can't do it all in one year. This is something that's got to be done piecemeal. There just isn't enough money to do it all in one year. And I know that over a period of time, these projects will add up, and we'll see the benefits of it. But if I could ask a question of Alder Weary? You've been in Alder for, what, 18 years? You're kind of the grandfather of the council? Have you seen any time in 18 years where we've had the monies to go forward with projects like this?
Probably not, no. We're always behind the eight ball.
We're always behind the eight ball. And so, I think at some point, as a community, we have to have the intestinal fortitude to say, if not now, then when? How long do we put it off? How long did we put off the Fox River cleanup? How long did we put off cleaning up the East River, which used to start on fire? I mean, there's a lot of things that have been put off, and we always pay a bigger price in the long run. I would still like to see some more data, but I do support GI projects within the city of Green Bay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. And then just a couple of quick points. These projects were included in the, you know, the capital improvement plan that Matt Heckenleibl has proposed. So, without the ARPA resources, these projects were slated to be funded with stormwater utility resources. What we're doing here is taking ARPA dollars to fund three particular projects. These projects were chosen because of the fact that they're, you know, a bit more innovative and making some green infrastructural investments. So, the reason that that was done was to free up, I'm not debating it.
Yeah, you are.
The reason that that was done was to supplant that stormwater funding in order to free up those resources, which can be spent flexibly all across the city on businesses and residents.
Thank you, your honor.
Other comments? Alder Gerlach?
Of course, I never have, I have no background in any of this, and I don't have the history that most of you have on these things. I just want to be clear, because of course, the intersection of Mason and Main was mentioned, that is, in my district. I don't know what value this has, but I just want to be clear with everyone that shortly after I was elected to represent District Three, I heard from Mr. Heckenleibl and discovered this huge plan that had been put together for my district to mitigate flooding. It was a $30 million plan, and he and I spent months together working on that. We went out and we looked at all of the places where these ponds were supposed to be built. I personally talked to every single property owner, homeowners and business owners that would have been affected. We studied it up and down, we had neighborhood meetings, we did everything we could, and in the long run, after all of that, Mr. Heckenleibl told me that the consultants felt that And in the long run, after all of that, Mr. Heckenleibl told me that the consultants felt that even with, um, the, uh, expenditure of thirty million dollars, if we had thirty million dollars to spend on it, it would make a negligible effect. So I, I don't know the answer, but I just want to, want you all to know that that prog- that project was, was absolutely explored, uh, in every way we, we possibly could, and it was simply put back on the shelf as not feasible. As far as this three million dollars and the green infrastructure, I leave that to your wisdom. I just wanted to give you some background on the other.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Just a couple of questions for Director Grenier, and perhaps one for, uh, Director Ellenbecker. Director Grenier, several years ago, um, we had submitted a communication about, um, creating a report to address all of the flooding that was going on in the city, and if I recall correctly, we kind of dusted off a report that was even done a couple of years prior. And the number that I seem to recall that, that struck me in that report, that it would cost approximately a hundred million dollars, um, to deploy all of the, the remedies, you know, that, that necessary, I guess, to correct flooding in the city. Uh, do you recall that report?
I do. Uh, the financial cost of implementation was extrapolated based on prior projects, and I believe the number was in excess of a hundred and fifty million.
Okay, thank you. And then, within that report, do you recall offhand, was GI, uh, ever mentioned? Green infrastructure ever mentioned in that report as, uh, one of the solutions that was recommended to be deployed?
At that time, green infrastructure was not a significant portion of what we were looking at, no.
Okay. Um, during the, the, uh, the last Finance Committee meeting, uh, a question had been raised about this investment. At the time, you had mentioned that, uh, that these particular projects would not have a noticeable impact. However, it would be the first step in what would be many steps that would ultimately be needed to have a long-term impact. Has your department studied, uh, at all, I guess, how much that investment would be long-term before we would have a measurable impact?
No, we have not.
Okay. And then do we, I mean, obviously, green infrastructure, at least from what I'm gathering here, is more expensive. Uh, the theory, I presume here, is that long-term, uh, it would have a greater impact from an engineering perspective? Would, would that be an accurate assessment?
Over time, as additional projects are brought online, the impact gets greater, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, but at this time, again, just to reiterate, we, we do not know what that total investment would be before we could get a measurable impact. And, I mean, if we were to request that, I guess, how long would it take your department, uh, to be able to provide counsel with some type of report about what that long-term investment might be?
Okay, I, I don't mean to be difficult, but I'm going to ask for some further definition. If we're talking about measurable impact on the storm sewer system as a whole, within the individual sub-basin that this project lies, or within the block that we're putting, uh, the green infrastructure in, because depending on the scale of what we're looking at, that, that measurable impact could change dramatically. The smaller you refine down your area of study, the more impact it's going to have.
Okay, understood. And I, and, and I don't think you're being difficult. I appreciate that, that explanation. The, uh, a, a question for Director Ellenbecker, if I could. Director Ellenbecker, I'm looking at the bond requests, and of course, we're gonna have a discussion around that in a little bit. Um, but there is, uh, this year, uh, in this year's bond request, eight point three million dollars being requested for stormwater, and another a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, uh, for forestry expenses on the stormwater tab. Is it possible, when you think about this three million, I would presume these eight point three million are necessary and immediate needs, uh, this three million that we have allocated from ARPA funds towards stormwater, is that a possible use or allocation for those funds?
That's where this is going. So yes.
Right, but add-ons. Right? Because this, this project, it's being proposed that this funding be allocated to implement the GI, but it's not necessary that the GI be included.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, though. I mean, this three million dollars, like you said, was allocated towards stormwater. These projects were included in the Capital Improvement Plan that Matt Heckenleibl has brought forward. They were simply identified as good uses of, of that, not the entire three million, but of that roughly million dollars.
Right, and, and I, I appreciate that piece. I think my broader question, however, is looking at the eight point three million that, that's being requested. Is this the only thing that ARPA can be applied towards, are these projects, or are there other things within that eight point three million where this ARPA fund could be allocated?
Yeah, it's totally flexible within stormwater.
Okay, so that is an option. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Director Ellenbecker.
Yes, yes, I was gonna say, um, anything probably in the stormwater would probably be viable. Uh, again, I'd have to look at the detail of every one of the projects in stormwater, but, um, the majority of them probably would qualify for that three million.
Okay, thank you. Uh, it, that's all I have for questions. Um, I, I, I mean, I'll leave it to, to maybe any other questions that might exist on the floor.
Alder Dorf.
Well, um, I want to reiterate something that I think Alder Galvin was saying, that, and I'll say it a little differently, but the journey begins with a single step. We need to start the journey. There's never been a time in the last eighteen years where we've had this, these extra funds, um, to go forth and to try out some new green infrastructure, or any kind of a project like this. And certainly, we could choose to use those funds on something else. I believe that using the funds for the green infrastructure is the right thing to do. When I look at the pro- proj- excuse me, when I look at the project outcomes, water quality improvement, stormwater runoff reduced, and aesthetic appeal is one of the outcomes. Another outcome, pollutant reduction, water quality improvement, stormwater runoff reduction, aesthetic appeal, and pollinator, pollinator habitat. Those are things that our Sustainability Commission has been looking at and working on, and trying to move the city toward. The other comment I want to make is that I keep hearing the number three million being bandied about. We're talking about less than one million of that for these three projects. We haven't even mentioned the rain barrel project. Is it appropriate that I may mention that? All right. And that with the rain barrel project, sixty thousand dollars is going to be, um, put toward that. And that project is for city of Green Bay residents that want to start a garden up and want to have it be a rain garden and get a rain barrel, they'll be allowed to come and get a rain barrel. Up to, they, or be reimbursed up to seventy dollars for a rain barrel that they may purchase elsewhere. And that would get people involved at kind of a grassroots level here in the city. It would allow people to go out into their gardens, to, to use the water from these rain barrels for their gardens, and to have a part in helping our city become a greener city. So I think that is another, another wonderful project that, that people could actually see in their backyard. It's the government helping people to help our climate, to help our city become a greener city. So, once again, I am in favor of all three of these projects. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett, and then, are, are you in, in the queue?
Yeah.
And then Alder Weary.
Yeah, and it's, really, it's a, it's a point of order and then a conversation, but you just had an interchange with Alderman Weary, and, and I, I'd like with a little clarification on that from the city attorney, because in the past, the former ma- and I'm not trying to make a big deal of it, but it's always something that I kind of was curious about. In the past, the former mayor would step down when he's advocating a position. He would do that quite often. He would give the floor, he'd give the gavel to the city council president. And, uh, attorney, could you kind of give some clarification on that? Can the mayor advocate for a position as chair, or can he answer questions when he's asked questions, but interject? And again, not trying to be difficult, but I think we need some clarification, 'cause I don't like tension. We can avoid it.
Yes, so, um, our ordinances provide that, um, the presiding officer may speak on a question, um, or make an emotion when they vacate their role as presiding officer. Um, and the definition of speaking on a question, um, involves debate. Um, debate in parliamentary procedure refers to a discussion on the merits of a pending question, um, meaning that is whether it should or should not be agreed to. So providing information or providing background information, um, by the presiding officer is much akin to how staff would be providing information or answering questions or giving clarification, context with respect to information that the council members need in order to debate, um, with basically discussing whether something should or should not be agreed.
So in that specific instance, when Alderman Weary, you know, a- asked the mayor to step down, should the mayor have stepped down?
I believe the mayor was providing context. Um, he did indicate that he's not debating, he's not advocating for it one way or the other.
I beg, uh, uh, Attorney Bongard, I beg to differ. He was advocating that.
Alder, Alder Burnett, you don't debate staff.
Excuse me?
You don't debate staff.
I'm disagreeing with her decis- she said that you weren't advocating for a position. You most certainly were advocating for a position. In fact, you cut off Director Ellenbecker when she was responding to a question that was directed to her, but not you as chair. I just, Alderman Johnson asked Director Ellenbecker a question. Before she could open her mouth, you interjected and provided the answer. That is leading the discussion towards a potential outcome that you find is desirable, and I think as chairman, you need to step down. I would be city council president. I'd take the gavel. You could speak for hours on end, I wouldn't care. But when you advocate a position from your chair, it's not appropriate. I agree with Alderman Weary. I haven't said anything in the past, but you do this more and more. Just step down. You know, speak for hours.
I appreciate the point that you're making. I think I'm pretty sensitive to the rules of this body, but I will certainly take that to heart.
Um, you're very sensitive to criticism, and this is a perfect example of that. So I'd like to ask, um, Attorney Bongard to clarify. You said that he was not inappropriate. You're saying that he didn't need to step down because he was not advocating a position. I believe he was advocating a position. Is that, is still your opinion that he was not advocating a position?
To clarify, I didn't state whether it was appropriate or not. I simply stated that as part of the discussion that he was having, he stated that he is not debating the issue, but providing context and clarification. So I, as the parliamentarian, and not, and I'm not taking a side as to the substance. I'm basically putting, putting forth the rules, and the body regulates itself. So I'm not, I don't act as, as the judge, um, in making a determination as to whether he was or was not. I'm basically stating or restating what was his position or what his statements were. And he proceeded to state that he was not debating the issue, but providing clarification. And as to, uh, I, I understand your point as to that he interrupted and answered a question, but again, answering question under the definition of what debate entails is not necessarily speaking on a question.
Okay, uh, real quick, and I'll move on, but that could be interpreted by, uh, a cynical person, that he is answering questions directed towards staff to get a desired outcome. That's the statement that I'd make, and I stand by that. If staff reports to him, and these are his objectives and his ideas, if he steps in and answers as-
Point of order, is this even germane to the discussion? I'm sorry, um, President Burnett, I've heard enough. This is not germane to the discussion. Your criticism of the mayor is not what we're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Okay, well, the que- okay, so, three million dollars for stormwater, green infrastructure and climate resilience. A million of that, correct, is towards these projects. There will be two million dollars more. We have a pot of money to alleviate some of the major issues in this city. For all the Alders, and, and it is my opinion, all of the Alders who live in districts that flood heavily, we're basically going to be taking a, a million dollars of a three million dollar pot of money that doesn't come very often to put towards a project. I believe that the Public Works Director and his staff should come up with a list of alternatives, because the monies don't come available like this. And it's a wonderful opportunity to address some of the major issues. I believe that the receivin' place on file is absolutely a good motion, because it doesn't kill, uh, green infrastructure projects, doesn't kill stormwater improvements, and it certainly doesn't kill cli- uh, climate resilience. We have already agreed to allocate three million towards that. What it basically does is sends a signal to the, the, the staff to say, come with some options and come with some long-term projections, because right off the bat, we'll put, you know, a million dollars towards these projects. And then, year after year, without a proper cost analysis to make any noticeable difference in improvements, we're gonna be asked year after year, and so then, if for, if future councils decide, well, it would cost, you know, three hundred thousand dollars for gray infrastructure and six hundred thousand for green infrastructure, and the city's in a pretty bad financial position right now, perhaps we'll go with the three million, three hundred thousand dollars for gray infrastructure. And those are decisions that the for- the future councils are going to make because of the bonding requests going forward. So I never want to assume just because something's in a capital improvement pla- pla- plan that we're gonna do that year after year. Each council will have some level of discretion on how those funds are spent. So, uh, a receivin' place on file just says, instead of sixty thousand dollars towards rain barrels, although, you know, a very good and pro- uh, nice thing to do, is that the role of a city government? People have been buying rain barrels all throughout this city for years upon years without being, you know, compensated financially. I'm a, I, I'm in favor of people buying rain barrels, but should we use sixty thousand dollars to have people buy rain barrels when that could be used to alleviate funding? So, uh, those are my comments. Alder Dorf, I do think I was completely in line. I was addressing, uh, an issue that came up between an alderman.
Point of order, I think we're done with that.
Are you the chairperson now?
I'm just making a point of order. I think we're done with that.
I was clear, I was trying to ease tension between, between a member of our council and the mayor on a question that came up. And Attorney Bongard asked, uh, answered the question. I accept her answer now. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I'll accept it. Thank you.
Alder Weary, and then Alder Gerlach.
Mr. Mayor. My two cents on that, since I have been here the longest, is I was here for Mayor Jaden. And, and he always said, I'm here just to run the meeting. Ran the meeting. When he wanted to debate something, he stepped down, and Tony Tyson at the time would, would step up and run the meeting. So anytime an information statement turns into stridently advocating or prolonged expressions of merits, that's when I do have a problem. And I, I don't care if you step down, that would be fine. But, uh, that's where I was coming from. It's not a bully pup- bul- bully pulpit. Um, going back to the item at hand here, the, it's the one in particular, but it really addresses all three. Government waste is incredible. It's easy to talk yourself into things when it's just us sitting around with staff and how great something is. But you know what? When the rubber meets the road and we have thirty-two million dollars worth of projects, more than I've ever seen in all my years, really pisses people off that we would look at these projects over, you look at our own list here. You want to look at things we could spend it on? Seymour Park Stormwater Pond, three point five million. There's one. Um, Seymour Park Stormwater, East Side, two million. There's another one. Uh, Main Street Flood Project Design. I guess we still are working on it, because there's a hundred thousand dollars in here for that. That's a concrete thing we can work on right here, right now. Or the Grand View Stormwater Facility for one point five million. Plenty of concrete, basic projects that we can work on. These are needs. Needs, not expensive wants. I understand we want to get there at some point. Not today. A lot of you are up for election, so you're gonna have to explain it to people why you're voting for things that you want and not things that we need. Thank you.
Alder Gerlach.
Could I please ask a question of Susan House?
Uh, I'm not sure if Susan-
She's here.
Is she?
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, I, I know, Susan, that we've asked you this question before, but since this is a, um, motion to receivin' place on file, I want to ask again. What is the, um, time constraint on, um, you know, on allocating these dollars?
There is a time constraint in that many of the green infrastructure or stormwater projects do take time to design and get the construction crews, et cetera, in line and, and operating before the funds are, have to be allocated. So, and expensed. So there is a, a timeline in that respect, and there's also a timeline in that we need to make sure that we have all of the electrical, fiber, and all of that, all lined up to address the infrastructure roads and green infrastructure items. We do have a little bit of time, um, for other o- for- roads, and green infrastructure items. We do have a little bit of time for other projects like the police items that we addressed at the prior meeting. We do have a little bit of time that way. But with the green infrastructure, we do need to plan that now and start working on that sooner than later.
And statutorily, we need to spend the funds by 2024, or dedicate the funds by 2024, and they have to be spent by 2026, according to the federal government.
Correct. Or we send them back.
Right. We don't want to do that. Other questions or comments? I think we got Alder Johnson and then Alder Scannell.
Alder LaFave has her hand up, too.
And then Alder LaFave.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I came into this with an open mind, and I really had a lot of questions, and I appreciate staff's response, and I've enjoyed some of the discussion here tonight. Sadly, not all of it. You know, but I think ultimately where my brain is coming in on this is I think what we have in front of us are a couple of nice-to-have projects when unfortunately, at this time, government is still not meeting its most basic responsibility to remediate flooding. We talked about that report, while several years old. $150 million of projects that had been earmarked within that report that identified something that would have an immediate impact on our flooding needs. And I agree that, you know, this is one-time funding, that we have the opportunity to do projects with. And I would, I think I'm going to lean in the direction of trying to leverage that one-time funding in a way that moves the needle, that has an immediate impact, because those are the needs that I see in my district. I think I would feel differently about this if we had a plan for the long-term funding to get this investment to have an impact. But right now, what we've heard is that these investments would not have an immediate impact, and we don't know how much it's going to cost to get us there because we haven't had that long-term conversation. So, I will support the motion to receive and place on file. But that doesn't mean that I would oppose these items if they came back at a later date with a more comprehensive plan so that we can better understand, again, of all of these needs we have in our community, how do we get there now? How do we have an impact now? I think that's what the residents, at least in my district, want to see, and I'm not sure that these investments help us do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Alder Scannell. And then Alder LaFave.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I kind of disagree with the way this is being characterized, that these are just inconsequential steps. Every one of the, even rain barrels, will play a role in reducing stormwater runoff. And they will also play a role in what we'd like to see with our city, with urban, how we handle our lawns. We need to start, if we're going to start thinking green, we need to start rethinking about how we handle our houses, our lawns, how we break, how, that whole mindset we have of trim, cut, everything's trimming neat. We really want to start seeing more gardens. We want to see more infrastructure that supports runoff from the gutters, from our, I think these, every one of these, they're small, but they're not insignificant. And we have to start somewhere. I think we get the ball rolling, so I still support it. And, you know, bringing up elections, that's also a form of bullying. That's not a point of debate. Thank you.
Alder LaFave.
Yeah, listening to everyone. At first, I thought, oh, yes, this is really great, and I would vote for the green infrastructure. And I do believe in green infrastructure. I think we have to think on this. But I think some of this, like the rain barrels, I think that's part of the Sustainability Committee. They should be, they should be taking this part, and they should be going out, and they should have a campaign, and getting it out to the public. And then also, they could also maybe be working on helping, having some businesses helping on that issue. You know, when we have projects, and there's a couple, and some for stormwater, they're big projects, very expensive projects. And I kind of thinking, well, we do have this money, and maybe, yes, we have these projects already, already set up, in that maybe this money should go towards that. Because I don't like bonding. I don't like bonding all the time. It's, you know, it's not good to always bonding, okay? And we do have this money, and there are projects that are already set there that we could put this money towards. And I think the green infrastructure is a good thing, but I think it's something that we need to talk about, and we need to look at. And I think the Sustainability Committee, that should be something that they should be pushing. They should be working on. And I think we could also go out to the public. And why don't we have a campaign of raising money for some of these things, besides, you know, taking these funds? And so, I'm kind of on the fence on this. How am I going to vote? Because I do believe in the green infrastructure, but I also think we have projects there that really need this money. Thank you.
Alder Dorf.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it, is my understanding correct that these three items would have been included in the bonding, in the bonding document, if they wouldn't have been over here?
Director-
That you just, that these items were part of the plan already. They were included in what DPW thought should be done. They're not just suddenly appearing because we have ARPA funds. Is my understanding correct that these items are here because ARPA funds could be used upon these items? Otherwise, they still would have been included. This doesn't, isn't something extra, some extra idea. I think that's what you were trying to explain before. I'm so happy that I understood that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Director Grenier, is there anything else that you wanted to weigh in on there?
No, that is a correct statement. These projects, the projects that are being considered tonight are listed in our 2022 capital program that we submitted to finance. So, when the bond request was up for discussion but not action at the last Finance Committee meeting, the supporting documentation that we provided in support of our bond request did include these items. So, we had planned on going forward with them regardless of whether or not there was ARPA funding. Now, one of the things that we did identify in the memo that we provided subsequent to the Finance Committee meeting is by utilizing the ARPA funds rather than the stormwater funds, that gives us the ability to take the money that we would have otherwise spent on these green infrastructure projects, and that will go into a different fund, a segregated fund, and that will provide the money for a grant program and/or a revolving loan fund program, which will fund additional green infrastructure projects that property owners will be able to apply to on private property, not within the public right of way.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thanks, Director. Alder Story.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think one of the things I'm having trouble with, you know, I mean, we do bond for things. Yes, we do. Do those bond requests always go through? Not always. So, that's one area that I just wanted to clarify. The fact that we're going to be talking later about the bonding requests as well from finance, you know, for the city, talking about 19 million, you know, I know it's a draft, you know, I know we're going to be talking about things. But, you know, I'm really of the opinion that we need to look at our immediate problems. You know, I was listening very closely to Alder Galvin because a lot of flooding is in his district. I was listening to the alders, where the problems really do exist. And I know that he was saying that green infrastructure is a good thing, and we need to look at it. But Alder Johnson says we need to move the meter. We need to make, move it. We've got to make it tick. We've got to make something happen. And I realize that some of these are planning initiatives of sorts, and I think there's some really good stuff with it. But I still don't feel fully comfortable that we have a plan totally in place here. I was kind of leaning toward it initially, but I think with the discussion, you know, when you receive and place something on file, we can bring it back. And I think a lot of the alders that want to do that want to bring it back. So, what's the harm? You know, I think we need to study it a little bit further, and I will look at it very closely as well. So, at this time, I will support holding, receiving and placing on file. Thank you.
Alder Gerlach.
Another quick question, please, if I may. And, Your Honor, if this is an inappropriate question, please tell me, okay?
Absolutely.
This is a question for Director Grenier. I know you never have enough money to do all the things you feel that we need to do. Do you personally, as our Director of Public Works, do you fully support this, this plan? Is that appropriate?
Yeah. Without taking sides, I want to be very clear about that, okay? What we have prepared is a capital program that meets the criteria that the Common Council has established for us. By that, I mean, the Common Council has challenged us to increase the amount of road fund, the amount of roads that we have proposed or that we're getting completed. We have proposed that as part of the 2022 capital program. The Common Council has identified a commitment to going forward to green infrastructure. We have proposed that as part of this capital program. I would not bring forward something to the Common Council that I didn't think met the criteria that the Common Council had established for the development of our program. So, in my opinion, my professional opinion, everything that we have brought forward under all three of the items under discussion are consistent with the directive that we've been given by the Common Council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So, the motion before us is received and placed on file. Any further comments on that? Seeing none, we will vote.
Can we use the board?
Yes. Request has been made to use the board, clerk.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Alder members, you may vote. Sorry, alders, you may vote.
And this is the motion to receive and place on file?
Yes, it is.
If we vote yes to receive and place on file, I understand what that means. If we vote no-
Then I'll make a new motion.
Then, yeah.
Then we go back to a new motion? Okay.
You go back to the previous motion, I believe.
Yeah, and there was a motion to approve prior to receiving place on file.
Okay, so Alders Galvin, Stevens, please vote. Or tell me how you'd like to be reported. Okay, thank you. Here's your displayed vote.
And that is received and placed on file seven to five. On to item three.
Yeah, moved to approve.
Motion to approve item three.
Sorry, who was that made by, Your Honor?
I'm sorry, clerk.
I did not hear who made the motion.
Alder Dorf.
Thank you, Alder Dorf. And who seconded it?
Alder Dorf made the motion, seconded by Alder Scannell, to approve item three.
Thank you.
Alder Weary on the motion?
This same discussion as number two. Just repeat the last hour, basically, and motion to receive and place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file. That was made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Brunet. Any discussion? Board vote again?
Your Honor, is that a board vote or a vote?
Yes, board vote.
Just give me a moment. Thank you, Alders. You may vote. Thank you. Here is your displayed vote. Oh, sorry. There you are.
That two is seven to five?
Yes.
On to item four.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. Alder Weary?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Motion to receive and place on file made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Brunet. We will use the board again.
Thank you, Alders. Just give me one moment. Okay. And here is your displayed vote.
That is six to six, so I would vote no.
Motion to approve?
Apparently so. Motion to approve, and that was seconded. All in favor, we will use the board.
Thank you, Your Honor. And Alders, just give me one moment. I had moved on to the second item. Just give me one moment.
This is motion to approve.
Yes, to approve.
No, I made a motion to approve.
Are you, you're requesting the-
I need to change.
Okay. Alder Scannell needs to change his vote.
And how would you like to change your vote, Alder Scannell?
To aye.
Thank you. Your Honor, was there another alder who wished to change his or her vote?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Here's your displayed vote.
That two ties six to six. I vote in favor. And on to item five.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. We'll go to Alder Dorf for some comments.
Thank you. So, I spent a few hours trying to come up with an explanation for why we had asked council to weigh in on this before we're ready to go to bonding. I am going to make a motion at the end to receive and place on file because that is really all we're asking. We're not going to be voting on bonding tonight. So, just, I would just want you guys to know up top that that's the motion that I would be making at the end. So, to clearly explain to you and to whoever is watching, because there's been a lot of comment about this bonding, what I'm asking on behalf of finance is to get a ballpark figure to shoot for in terms of the bonding using the Ailer's chart. You all have the Ailer's chart. The Ailer's chart looks like this. For our studio audience, it looks like this, okay? That way, we can make the best use of the time we have at finance in looking for further reductions or additions to the bonding request, and we can bring back to the whole council a recommendation. Secondly, as I stated at the Finance Meeting, we're not going to be discussing individual items tonight to be approved or removed. That work is going to be done at committee, at finance. We're not asking you to do the Finance Committee work. But what we want to be able to do is frame our discussion at finance and bring something back to council that will be somewhat acceptable. The final decision regarding bonding should happen at our next council meeting. You have some documents regarding bonding in front of you. The first thing I want to talk about is the unaltered prioritized requests of the department heads. That's that 19.5 million, which is now down to 18.8 million. But that's the 19.5 million. The department heads, the chief, police chief, the fire chief, DPW, parks, brought forward, IT, brought forward their priority needs. They have not been altered or edited by the mayor's office. They've not been altered or edited by finance at this time. This was a request made at the last bonding by several council members that wanted to see for themselves what are, what do the departments want before the mayor says, "Take stuff out," before finance takes the things out. So, this time, that is what we talked about at finance, and it is unusual- that is what we talked about at Finance, and it is unusual because we usually had a much lower number to start with. And that's why that 19.5 million was so startling to me. If you watched the meeting, you would have seen that. They are also not everything that every department would have wanted. Of course not. These are their prioritized needs. They're the priorities of the department, and we may not be able to even bond for all of these priorities. That's going to be up to the whole Council. So today, as Chair of Finance, I'm asking us to determine a threshold, a range of acceptable amounts to bond for. And the Ailer's chart is fairly accurate, but since that chart was produced, the requests have dropped from 19.5 to 18.8 million at the top. But on this chart that you have, that we're going to be talking about in a minute, it isn't 19.5 anymore, but it's close enough. It's in that ballpark. So in my opinion, that 18.8 or 19.5, I'm going to give you my opinion right off the bat, that's too much. That's too big. I'd like to see that to be reduced. In the past, we've always striven to keep our, what we bond for, pretty much equal with what we've been able to pay off. But that's not going to be able to happen this time because this year, we're only able to pay off 8.5 million. And that is not, if we only bond for another 8.5 million, there's so much we will be giving up. Could do that. It's up to Council to decide that. My personal opinion is that that's not realistic. So we're looking from you tonight through to some discussion for a direction as to what range we're shooting for. The real question here is what are we willing to forego if we don't want to bond for 18.8 million dollars? And where can it be taken from? So I did a little, little addition. You won't find this in the charts, but totally, the police are asking for about 1.7 million total. Parks, about 1 million. IT, 50,000. Fire, 2.75 million. And guess what? Then comes DPW, 13,230,000. So if we're going to reduce that bonding down, the lion's share is going to have to come from DPW. DPW at 13,230,000, of that, 11.4 million are various pavement projects. So again, we're going to be looking at reductions in our pavement projects. And because the majority of their bonding is for the roads, it's for pavement projects. So whatever we don't, you know, we're not going to be able to get much out of the police cars, a little bit, maybe a little bit about, get rid of a fire engine, don't, don't put in a baseball field, but that's not going to get us down a lot. What's going to get us down a lot is giving up some of our road projects. So we, as a Council, we ask for roads to be prioritized. The percentage of roads from last year to this year has not gone up. Guess what? We're not asking, we're not being able to do a whole lot more roads. But what has gone up is the cost of the materials, which has made this go sky high. So we can and we will, if needed, ask police and fire and parks to make reductions at Finance next week, but those department requests cannot support the kind of reductions we would need to avoid any increase in the levy. The lion's share needs to come from DPW. Most of that would be reducing road construction, and we need to increase the levy if we're not going to do that. The Ailer's chart shows us that if we go from 19.5 to 15 million, this is, again, I'm going to be straight honest, this is what I think is a good number to shoot for. The difference in a annual cost on a $150,000 home is 52 cents. That's how much it will go up. Look at the chart. It'll go up from, if we only went to 12 million, it would be at 20784. And if we go up to 15 million, it will be at 20836. So 15 million will give an increase of 52 cents for a $150,000 home. And then if you look at how that chart intersects with the 12 million, you can see the blue line, I'm sorry, those of you at home cannot see the blue line, but there's a blue line and a green line and a red line. The red line goes off the charts. I think it goes way too high. But the blue and green lines do intersect, and I think that 15 million is a reasonable number. So I'd really like us to have a discussion on what is, what you want us to be aiming for next week. We have to get this bonding passed by our very next meeting in order for monies to be dedicated. Fire trucks take a long time to build, nine months to 12 months to 18 months. The roads, we got to get in there. We got to get the bidders. We've got to get our bids in to these, or accept bids from the construction workers in order for us to get our roads built first. So we can't be waiting on bonding. So my motion overall is to receive and place on file, and then I hope that we, I get a second for that, and then we can have a healthy discussion about what should we be aiming for to bring back to Council.
Alder Dorf makes a motion to receive and place on file, seconded by Alder Scannell. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it is quite the change from past years where the Mayor's Office would work directly with department heads to whittle down an amount, and then the department heads would put forward their requests, and there'd always be a column, here's what department heads request, here's what the Mayor thinks it should be, and it's presented to us, and then the Council is always the third column, here's what finally got represented, you know, or approved. I've seen many projects taken out and put in of numerous kinds, you know, because Council obviously can have different priorities than the Mayor's Office, which is fine. That's what we're here for. I would like to see the Mayor's Office provide his priorities and preferred projects, along with total bonding target. So I would make a motion to refer to the Mayor's Office and have that prepared for the next Finance Committee.
I'm not sure if that supersedes the receiving place on file. Attorney Bungert?
I'm reviewing the priorities. Give me one second.
You bet. Any other comments, Alder Weary?
Yeah, if it doesn't, I believe it does, but if it does not, then I would hope we would vote it down so we could take up that, that measure. Thanks.
One information, Mayor. Yeah, Alder Johnson.
Is there any reason that your office would not want to provide that recommendation? Meaning, does it require a motion?
That's what I was going to say is, that's, that's what's going to happen. I mean, the way that I view this, to provide a little bit of background, is we don't normally do work sessions. You know, a lot of municipalities sort of do work sessions. I think this is a useful exercise, as I said at the front of the meeting, for our department heads to bring forward the objective request, have us provide some feedback, give a sense of things. But yes, then absolutely, I'll be bringing forward what I'm comfortable with.
With that understanding that you are bringing this forward anyway, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. Additional comments or questions on the item? Alder Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a question for Director Ellenbecker. And I appreciate this, this table that's been laid out here. And of course, one of the things that's talked about in here is, you know, what that levy increase would need to be to support the debt service on the amount that we would bond. However, it's been suggested that we would need to increase the levy. Is that our only option, or is there an option to, I guess, become a little bit more efficient operationally so that it could absorb that? Is that a possibility?
Well, the impact of picking out a larger bonding will certainly increase the levy for debt. I think you're asking the question is whether or not the mill rate would actually go up. If there was a way you could find efficiencies and reduce somewhere else along on the expense side, or we had enough growth on the assess side, you know, maybe you wouldn't have, the levy would not necessarily go up. But because of this larger bonding, you're, the levy, the needed for debt service, that portion would need to go up, yes, whether or not you could find it an offset somewhere else, or increase revenues or reduce expenses somewhere else. But this...
And I appreciate that explanation. I think really, at the end of the day, I think you stated it better than what I was asking, which is, this is, this is the amount of levy that's required to support the debt service. And there are ways, as you mentioned, I mean, there could be assessable growth value. I mean, we could potentially have, I don't have the table in front of me, but tids maybe that are, that are expiring that could be contributing. I mean, there are other things that we could be looking at as well. So, that was the only question that I had, and I do support the motion.
Thanks, Alder. Other questions or comments? Alder Burnett?
Yeah. Thank you. And I just want to remind everyone, iron sharpens iron. So as though we have tensions and squabbles about certain things, we are all one city and we all work together, and this is a good example of that. My opinion on bonding is that, and this would probably be no surprise to any of you perhaps, is that I recently read that the United States government is $30 trillion in debt now, okay? $30 trillion in debt for a government entity to be, you know, owed to foreign governments and other Treasury holders. It's a scary thought. Governments deeply in debt limit flexibility moving forward. And, you know, relate that down to the local level. City of Green Bay, you know, due to many factors, the cost of equipment, materials, cost of labor, inflation, you name it, we're dealing with the economic situation where we are faced with a larger bond issue. Part of that is the capital improvement plan that the Council asks staff of the Mayor to...
Foreign governments and other Treasury holders, it's a scary thought. Governments deeply in debt, limit flexibility moving forward.
Clerk Jeffries, got an echo. Clerk, there we go.
Oh, my goodness.
Go ahead, Alder Burnett.
I said it twice, so that's a good sign. Anyways, my point is that governments that, due to the circumstances of the environment that we're working with, you know, it's scary times. And I know we promised the constituents, and I myself want more roads done. I get that. We did, the city staff and the Mayor's Office did exactly what we asked them to do for a while, and that is to bring forward a proposal for a capital improvement plan. And that goes into several years. Now, on a separate email, I, you know, contacted Director Ellenbecker and looked at like the trend line year after year, and that the debt is going to make a rather sharp increase if we, you know, follow the capital improvement plan. So obviously, we need to make some changes, otherwise, we're going to increase our debt capacity. And the reason why that's concerning, to increase debt capacity in this environment, is that the deeper a municipality goes in debt, that requires more money to service the debt. So year after year, especially if it's levy-supported debt, we're going to have to increase taxes in order to service the debt. And then when you increase taxes, a couple hundred thousand dollars to service debt, that means you have to borrow more money the following year. On and on you go. It's a vicious cycle. So to answer Alder Person Dorf's question, you know, where do I fit? I kind of like the idea of trying to get that to a reasonable level, you know, much more in line with what we had been doing. I know that's going to be an extraordinary ask, and I'm willing to offer my suggestions on what I would cut because I don't want to, you know, make this entirely an issue with the Mayor and then, oh, see, the Mayor did this, or he proposed cutting that. I think hopefully, as a, as a Council, we can kind of move past that and work on this issue together and not squirm any political points in regards to what gets cut or what gets proposed. But I, I am concerned. I'm concerned about a high debt load because it's going to require more levy-supported dollars, and the cycle will continue. I think the public understands the financial situation that other municipalities are doing or going through, and as much as we can be lean and maybe like kind of circle the wagon, so to speak, kind of get through this period of time with acquiring as little debt as possible to hopefully be in a better position when things turn around throughout our country. Our country's $30 trillion in debt. Our city's over $200 million in debt. You know, borrowing eight to 10 million more than what we did last year in the last few years is a real frightening concept. So we need to make cuts, and I'm willing to offer my suggestions if I'm asked. But those are my comments, and of course, support the motion. And I appreciate the Mayor offering to come up with his proposals and bring them back to the Council. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
Clarification, what number am I aiming for then, in Finance? I, I didn't understand. If you, could you ask, Alder Burnett?
Oh, sure. Sure. I mean, the same amount that we did last year with some flexibility depending on the intricacies of different projects.
Which was what?
Like a fire, I mean, for example, the police cars, there's 34,000. Obviously, we wouldn't need to replace all of them, this bonding issue, maybe one less fire truck, some of the pavement projects.
I'm just asking for the number, which was what, 11,000, 11 million, 12 million? What was that number?
What was it? Director Ellenbecker sent me the email. I can't see it, but for me, it would be a target, what we, basically, less than what we paid off. So we're still making good financial traction. We're paying off whatever we paid off in debt this year. That's what, we should be under that.
Less than 8.2 million. That's what you want us to, from 18.8 down to 8.2. That was, that is what you're suggesting.
Well, I said it would be difficult. I didn't say I'd support it. You asked the question. That's what my target would be, and I just said it would be difficult. But that doesn't mean, Alder Dorf, that I wouldn't, if the proper conditions and certain projects, when we hear from staff, just how critical they are, I'm a reasonable person. I wouldn't say no to fire trucks and police cars if they're breaking down and need to be in the shop every other day. Like, I'm reasonable. You asked a figure. I said 8 million with some flexibility to go above that if necessary. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. No questions? Alder Gerlach, since you haven't spoken yet?
I just, it might surprise you, I'm looking for some clarification here. I think I heard that Alder Dorf, as Chair of Finance, would like us to suggest that, as a Council, we'd probably be comfortable with a certain level. But then also, I heard that you were asked, will you have your input? And you will, of course. And so can we do it in that order? Is that's okay? I would really love to hear what some of my other colleagues have to say. I appreciate what Alder Burnett had to say, and I wish that I could hear from some more.
Yep. Alder John, did I? No, Alder Scannell. Sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just first, I think bringing up the federal debt is out of order and completely off point. The federal debt is nothing compared to, I mean, the circumstances, they're just not comparable. They're not equitable. What we have to deal with and what the federal government has to deal, they can make money. They're not in the situation we're in. It's not relevant. I don't see how that's helpful at all. And secondly, I would just like us to keep in mind, speaking of the federal government, they did pass an infrastructure bill, finally. Been waiting for a number of years for that. So I would recommend that we kind of tread water a little bit till we find out what's all doable with that money. We'll be having some more money coming down the road for infrastructure. So I don't agree with going down to 8 million. I think 15 is a reasonable number, a target. So I would recommend that. And just to remind everybody, you know, we are going to get some infrastructure money. I would, I'm not sure, it should be coming fairly soon. They passed it a while ago, so let's be a little careful, but let's not be crazy. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think the, those are good comments, just in terms of where things stand with the infrastructure bill. Build.gov was just published within the last couple days. That gives some guidance to states and municipalities. And we will be having a meeting with, with the Secretary of Transportation, his office at the state level, before the next Finance meeting, just to try to get a little bit more sense for what the city might receive. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have the numbers in front of me, and certainly Chief Litten and Director Grenier, if you could answer this question. This body has previously authorized already several transactions that need to be part of the bond request. Can you confirm what those amounts were?
Director Johnson, from a far part's perspective, there are two, one that's on order and one that you advanced already.
Do you recall what the amount was, Chief Litten?
Approximately 1.375, something like that, 1.3 million dollars.
Director Ellenbecker, do you have those figures as well to confirm?
DPW's is 1375 as well.
Okay. So, and again, I think those are just close enough for my point, which is, I'm a reasonable person, too, and I think 8 million is going to be darn near impossible if, in fact, we do want Public Works to do any roads. if, in fact, we, we do want Public Works to do any roads this year. And so I'll admit, I'm not sure, twelve million, fifteen million. I, I think we need to be somewhere in there. I, I do think the nineteen five is too high. You know, several years ago, I had asked the, the question when I was a member of Improvement Services Committee, if there were trade publications that were put out that could predict the cost of materials. And while I don't think any of them could, could forecast the impact that COVID would have on materials, as Director Grenier has alluded to, the price of materials is skyrocketing right now. And so we're trying to do more roads at a time when the prices are higher than we've seen in recent memory. And that, that's not a great formula for having impact. So I, I think we've gotta engage in that dialogue a little bit as well at Finance Committee. And again, without a crystal ball, it's gonna be really difficult, but we've got some work ahead of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a magic number to offer you, sorry, but I'll definitely be there and listening in and can weigh in. I would certainly suggest, I think we still have some Oneida Agreement money, maybe not much, two, three hundred thousand, something like that, you know, perhaps use that. And then the ARPA funds, we have the ten million dollar bucket and the three million dollar bucket that we can use for some projects. So that's thirteen million dollars. I would maximize those as much as we can. I mean, they're meant for one-time purchases, and we certainly have a lot of those right now, so. And hopefully, we can get some answers from our big brother. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? We got a motion and a second to receive in place on file. Alder Stewart?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if I have a magic number either. I did sit through Finance for the three and a half hour meeting, and a lot of good discussion. I've been hoping over the, over the years to look at better efficiencies, because it has been mentioned by an Alder or two of, of waste. And I know some of the department heads might say, well, we don't have that much waste. But I think there, there are areas that we could shore up. I mean, I had talked about, and I know people have pushed back on it, some of the departments, but combining garages, for example, selling some city properties, not jobbing repairs out. You know, I've talked to a number of folks behind the scenes, and we're jobbing stuff out that we could probably do in-house. So how much will that save us? I'm not sure. But I'm willing to look at that, and I, I really think that we gotta look at efficiencies, you know, not just bonding and adding and adding. We need to look at efficiencies, and that's something I'll, I'll peek at. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. All right, all in favor of the motion to receive in place on file? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been dispensed with. Personnel?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any items here to be handled separately? Alder Burnett?
Number one.
Number one?
Two.
All right, doing them both. So we will just move to item one. Motion there?
Go through.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Alder Burnett?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I, I support the motion, okay? Phil, Captain of Police Department, very important electrical inspector, you know, important, I suppose. Well, it's important, but you know, when I say suppose, I don't know if other staff members could do the work, or, you know, we could work in other ways of filling that service. The reason I pull this is that when we talk about the financial condition of the city, bonding, how much should we borrow, how much should we cut, one thing that, that we could do, you know, moving forward, just to kinda bridge this gap, to make our, you know, city financial position favorable at year end, that kinda make room for an additional levy next year for debt borrowing, is not fill some of these positions. You know, obviously, there are critical positions that need to be filled. Police, Public Works, Fire, they're, all of our positions are important. Every department head will advocate for some positions. But when I say not fill a position, I'm simply saying positions that leave the city, maybe, maybe we delay the hiring a little bit, six months, you know, three months, nine months, or maybe wait the next budget year. We are still in a position, due to COVID, where we have a lot of department, department employees working from home through our remote work policy. I think that there are some possibilities that less people, less citizens, less phone calls are coming into City Hall. Not saying these positions aren't important, that we should never fill them, but, you know, maybe we ask our department heads to really look a little deeper at how they can redistribute some of the work, so the city can save some money on not filling positions until a little bit later than we ideally would like to. So that's all. I support the motion, but I'm gonna look a little closer at some of these future positions moving forward to determine if some positions can be held a little longer, considering we're still dealing with COVID, and perhaps reduce demand at City Hall for some of those professional services. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Item two?
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. That was pulled by Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna make a motion right away to receive in place on file.
Motion has been made to receive in place on file by Alder Weary?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Burnett?
And then under discussion, I don't see this as a problem. That's something we need to address. I, I just have not. When have we taken a department head and thrown them to the curb on a willy-nilly notion? We haven't, because it takes a majority of the council. Now, do we hold them accountable? Yes, that's our job. So what this would do is shift that from us being able to hold them accountable every two years, and we are the citizenry. So we're taking that away from the citizens and putting it solely into the mayor's office. Their job would become much, much more difficult to try and remove them from that position. So instead of perhaps trying to not only help us and the mayor, you'd see it shift more towards really just helping one office, and it's meant to help all of us. I haven't heard a good argument of why this needs to change. Oh, no, we might put some people through the, you know, through a little bit of a rough review, maybe, when it comes to appointment time. Oh, no, not that. I haven't heard that we have a problem getting applicants. And you know why? Because we have pretty good department heads. Some of them are really great. So that tells me we've gotten good applicants and we have good department heads. So again, it's not needed. We're, we're clipping our own wings. Why would we do that to ourselves? Still boggles my mind. Why would we just voluntarily hand over, hand over that ability? Just odd, strange. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Other comments on the motion to receive in place on file? Alder Galvin, then Alder Gerlach, then Alder Dorf?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've heard this referred to as giving up our power. I've just never understood the ability of the council. Why would the council want to remove someone from their position for no reason? We let a person walk into a meeting on a Tuesday night, and if that person has maybe not resurfaced enough roads in that councilperson's district, here's the time to get even with them. Doesn't have to explain why they're voting them out of office, but there you go. We didn't like the way the police chief, or no, I'm sorry, I take that back, he's, he falls under police and fire. But any other department head doesn't do what a councilperson wants, here's their opportunity to take a shot at them. Even if they're not removed from office, they're, they're being put up as if they've done something wrong. No rhyme, no reason, no explanation, no recourse, boom. And if we were to get enough council members together, we could potentially remove someone from their job for no reason. No reason at all. Has it ever happened? No. Could it happen? Absolutely. That's why it's there, to remove them for no reason. I believe in due process. That's what this country is based on. Everything is due process. For a council member to be removed from office by a method other than the voters, it's due process, and we've seen that happen here. I can't see why we would want to keep this power so that we can go after department heads and make them tremble because they're not doing what we want. I don't think that's right. I've said it before, I don't think it's American, and I think it's embarrassing to wanna keep doing it that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw this study that I think it was Chief Falds provided for us. Research, I think he was asked to do this, find out about other municipalities and, and how many of them have the same kind of process that we have, and I can't see any that do. Only Green Bay has a two-year term, and this is my concern. I agree with what Alder Galvin just said. Just because we can't say, oh, I remember the time when we lost so-and-so because he went to Appleton because he could stay for indefinitely, just because we can't identify that doesn't mean it hasn't happened or that it won't happen. And we don't know if we're getting a lot of applications. We don't know that, we just know how many we're getting. Any one of our very experienced and trained and skilled directors or, or deputy directors could go to find a job very easily. They can just go to Manitowoc, and they won't have to face this two-year option of, you know, I'm gonna be, possibly might be let go in two years. I've been in the workforce since I was eleven years old, and I never had an offer like that. I can't imagine signing a teaching contract and they'll say, well, you know, we'll think about it again in two years. They wanted somebody that would stay as long as they, as they would produce and do well and flourish. I just think it's, it doesn't make any sense not to change this to indefinite.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to reference the chart, but Alder Gerlach beat me to it. But I think that it's important that everyone look at that chart and, and see that there are cities on that chart, like Appleton, and Eau Claire, and Fond du Lac, and Kenosha, La Crosse, Manitowoc, Ashgosh, Racine, Sheboygan, Waukesha, and Wausa, indefinite terms. Green Bay, two years. We are no doubt losing good applicants that would not want to come into a situation like this. Alders are voting, Alders that get elected, I believe it's at our first meeting, is that correct, Mayor?
I believe so.
At the first meeting. So you can walk on as an Alder, it's your first meeting, you haven't worked at all with any of the department chairs at all, and you're being asked to approve whether they get to keep their job. That's, that is not American, as Alder Galvin said. That is not right. Due process is the right way to do this. This doesn't mean that a person could do a, a poor job and continue on. No, because people can be removed for cause. And for cause means that they've done something inappropriate, wrong, unethical, immoral, whatever, illegal. So for cause, they can be removed, but not just at the whim of Alders. And I've seen it happen in my tenure on council, where an Alder will pop up with a name out of the blue and say, I want, I move that we don't reappoint the clerk, for example. Comes out of the blue, nobody's expecting it. How do you think it makes that employee feel? That is not how we want to treat the employees that we have. I am absolutely voting against receive on, and place on file, and when that fails, as is my hope, then I will make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary first, Alder Johnson, then Alder Weary for a second time?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of the, I've been thinking about this issue a lot. And of course, you know, the topic of due process has come up, and, you know, what's interesting right now is in our current format, due process is not afforded in either branch of government, the executive branch or city council, because in, in both instances, of course, if the majority of council votes right now to not approve or reappoint a director, it, it just is. There's, there's no process involved there. And obviously, the executive, the mayor, is allowed to remove anybody right now because it is an at-will employment. You know, one thing, though, however, that I've given a lot of contemplation to is this notion that, you know, council needs to somehow retain some level of authority over that. And I, I thought about the federal government. Obviously, when you appoint federal cabinets, it's a one-time vote. I thought about state government, when you appoint your cabinet secretaries, it's a one-time vote. Council does not completely lose its authority in, in this process. We still can remove someone with three quarters. And really, right now, we can do that, obviously, every two years with seven votes. What changes ultimately is that we go to the necessity to remove someone for nine votes. But one, so, so as it stands right now, I'm opposed to the motion, and if a new one is made, if it fails, I, I would support that. You know, but one thing that I would simply request, and I, I'm gonna contemplate whether or not this should require a future communication, but if in fact, these individuals are going to be appointed through the mayor's office and council is losing its ability to have a simple majority to remove someone for nonperformance or, or otherwise, it would be nice to have more engagement from the council on the front end. So when you, when you think about search and screen committees that oftentimes you see at the university level or, or other organizations, I think having more council representation, more council input on the front end, I think would be a good thing for our city and for our city government. So, you know, maybe there's, there's a modification that could be made to that process. But I do agree that right now, having to put department heads on trial every two years is not a healthy environment. I don't think that it's been an inhibitor in terms of recruiting candidates before, because I don't think anybody knew this existed or would expect that it existed. And clearly, now, we're having a very public discussion about it. And, and I, my, my worry would be that it becomes an issue moving forward. So, so I think, right now, I think that's where I stand on the, on the motion and perhaps subsequent motion, but more importantly, I would just like to really emphasize that I think we need to find a way to have more council engagement in that hiring process. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Just on that point, just so all, all of council is aware, the last three appointed officials that I've appointed, we have had Alders involved, and Alder involved in the interview process. So I think it's, it's a good, good idea. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was previously stated by an Alder that the scenario hadn't even happened, where a department head was, was not reappointed. But we're gonna try and guess that it might. And I'm wondering, there must be more to this, something deeper than just wanting to change that, but who knows what that might be. Unfair process. There's a flaw in the logic. If it's an unfair process, that somebody can just be let go for any reason, then why does the mayor still retain that if that's an unfair process? It should be good for both. Right now, at least they get a jury of twelve. Then it'll just be a jury of one. Mayor's tired of you, you're gone. At least with the council, you've got, you know, you gotta have seven of twelve, which is rare to do on a lot of, a lot of times, we wanna agree on something, especially the removal of someone. That's why it hasn't happened. So just think long and hard before we change it. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf?
I want a clarification. I believe the mayor's always had that ability, just as the superintendent of, of schools has the ability to remove an administrator.
You don't have the floor.
Yeah, I have the floor. Excuse me, I have the floor. Excuse me, excuse me. I have a, I have the floor.
Alder Dorf has the floor.
Yeah, that, being, being an at-will employee is similar to being a school principal, a school administrator. You are, you serve at the will of, of the superintendent and the school board, but at the superintendent, you can be removed by the superintendent. Then, at the mayor, in my understanding, does have the authority and has always had the authority for at-will employees to be removed. And due process still is given to them, even if it's an at-will dismissal. There must be some due process that's given. It's not just for no reason. There is due process that's given. We don't even have due process if the council is removing someone. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell, then Alder Burnett?
Yes, just real quick. I, I don't see it as giving up any kind of power. I can't imagine anything that the council would do that if, if a director needs to be removed wouldn't happen through the natural process. I don't see how we're, the council's has any role in this that's positive. Any director that needs to be removed, that the council would want to remove, would happen through a natural process anyway. So I, I see no reason why we should be included in this. I don't think it's wise to include us in this. It's just not, we're part-time employees. We got a lot of different backgrounds. I think you- I think you leave this to the HR, you leave this to the mayor, who's a full-time employee, the executive. Our role comes in, I think, as Alder Johnson mentioned, at the front end with the hiring and with the approval of the first hire. So as far as reappointments of directors, I just don't see it practical. I don't see anything but pernicious outcomes in pursuing it, and that it's not necessary. Any director that needs to be moved, that the council would want to move, would be moved through natural processes. So I see no problem with this at all. Thank you.
Alder, Alder Burnett?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just don't, I mean, both sides seem to be giving kind of extreme scenarios, but I really see no compelling reason to change what we have already always been doing, and it seemed to be working fine. It's ironic because of one hand, we're saying that it's going to limit the quality of department heads that we're getting to hire, but then on the other hand, we're saying that all of the department heads are performing well, which I happen to agree with. So if we're having a hard time finding candidates, how did we get the group that we currently have? It just seems counterintuitive. It's like trying to argue a different position using a different, it just seems strange. We'll remind everyone that the department heads in our city of Green Bay carry substantial responsibilities and duties, running our elections, in charge of human resources, public works, of course, police and fire, you know, captains are hired by the Police and Fire Commission. But all those administrative positions, city attorney, finance, they're all, and parks, you name it, they all carry substantial responsibilities, and they, the positions get compensated for that level of competence that they bring to the position. All of these department heads make well over $100,000. And so for me, if we're going to justify spending that much for top talent, then we need to make sure that the talent is accountable to all the people and through the elected representatives of their city government, who every two years has to go door-to-door in their campaign and hear from a public, a public that could say, things are going great, no problem, everything's okay. And of course, we'd have no reason to not, you know, fulfill a position or for, an appointed position at that time. But if we're going door-to-door and we're saying, my gosh, roads are horrible, and just using an example, roads are horrible, what happened with this election, what a scandal, what a shame, all these things that the public hears, we hear from the public, and then each council, having just been elected, from hearing all of that feedback, can say, you know what, maybe the public's on to something. This is an opportunity to remove a department head. I think that we're being a little disingenuous when we say that this will be a public process. This would be behind closed session. Whenever we have dealt with personnel issues, it has been behind closed doors. The only thing, and I think some of you might be kind of having a flashback to this moment, but when we started Zoom, there was a real unfortunate situation where we had this discussion nearly two years ago, and it was public because of a technology issue. So we, we had some things aired publicly that we wish would not have been aired publicly, and hopefully, we've all moved on from that. I just don't see a reason why this is an issue. We've attracted really good employees. It holds them accountable, not just to, you know, a handful of council members, but all council members. And we've never done it, I mean, that I remember, I don't think we've ever not, that I've been in office, I mean, Alderman, where you mentioned something at the last meeting that it happened once, we're just kind of coming up with all these scenarios of if it happened or it's going to happen. We've got to trust the public in that they elect council members that are mature, professional, responsible, that they don't hold grudges and this and that. I don't agree with everything that the department heads tell me. I have disagreements on things. I've just had a disagreement with the city attorney, but I wouldn't hold a grudge against her and not appoint her to another two-year terms based on a simple disagreement. Let's be real, we're mature people, and all council members, hopefully, if they get elected moving forward, will carry that same decorum that this current council carries. So I'm in favor of the motion. I just don't see compelling reason to differ what we have always done. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So you have a motion to receive and place on file. It's been seconded.
Use the board, please.
We will use the board.
Thank you, Alders.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm reading this here, trying to, is this to hold?
This is to receive and place on file.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Here's your plate vote. Can you see, sorry. Here it is. Thank you, sorry, I clicked it.
So that fails eight to four.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
No.
The ayes have it.
Nay.
Public Arts Commission.
Second.
Motion to approve the report of the Public Arts Commission made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately? None, all in favor of approving that report, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Sustainability.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately? None, all in favor of approving that report, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Sustainability.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Gerlach. There has been a request to speak. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is probably more of a question. I don't know which Alder sits on this committee. If it's, okay, Alder Scannell. It might be helpful, and this is a good matrix and a good working document, but I do think every decision has to have some cost implications kind of clearly spelled out. You know, basic services have to be met before we start exploring and expanding new concepts. So maybe look into having, you know, an extra column, you know, economic impact or cost or city budget implication. That way, you know, maybe we don't want to go down this path because it's pretty costly. Maybe we can hit some of these lower fruits. So I just, just an idea to put that out there, because when it comes around, obviously, we're going to have to look at cost, but it's good to look at it upfront, I think.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Well, we could, you know, kind of take a look at it, but quite frankly, I don't know that we would know the costs upfront. I mean, but a lot of these are goals that are going to be five years down the road, 10 years down the road, who knows what the costs are going to be. I mean, I'll bring it up that, you know, if we can have some kind of ballpark figure or some kind of idea, that, yeah, that could be included, certainly. But I think it's going to be pretty tough, but...
It has to be closer to...
To actually doing some of these, though, we'll have a better idea. We just saw tonight, you know, what the extra cost would be to do a project like that. So it's good to know, you know, it's nice to talk about things in theory, but then when you start talking numbers, maybe it's not as cool. So thanks.
Most of these guys are going to actually go to a committee, and that's when I think your numbers are really going to start popping.
I just wanted to get that, that idea, you know, circulated.
Yep, yep, I'll certainly bring it up.
All right, thank you.
Because we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Equal rights?
Must approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Alder Burnett?
Yes, thank you. It's one agenda item. I think it was something about housing, if I'm not mistaken, but there were some other, couple of points I want to make about this meeting, a couple other, it's related, but Director Folds, the question is directed towards you. Watch the minutes, and the commissioners kind of had an interesting idea, idea that I'm not opposed necessarily, but I want a little more clarification. The members of the committee who, you know, represent perhaps a certain segment of our community, a certain demographic group, that could kind of be a voice for those people in the community. They, one of the members, one of the commissioners, had an interesting idea that there would be a picture of the commissioners on the city's website, so people can say, okay, this person's on the Equal Rights Commission, I can kind of reach out to them with questions. Director Folds, you kind of said that you would look into that, or perhaps you were looking into that. My question, and I just want to make sure we're being very consistent, it's good that we have that, if we do do that for Equal Rights Commission, couple thoughts. One, I want to make sure that the public knows that they are appointed members of that, that any decision, any directive that any board, that that board makes would be contingent on the approval of council, but then also, secondly, that if we're going to do that for this committee, then we should really think about it, doing it for all, so we're consistent. And just a real quick, the boards and commissions, there's Ethics Board, there's Housing Authority, Transit Commission, you know, all the, Traffic Bicycle Pedestrians, we need to have a real, you know, good policy discussion, one, if that's appropriate, because there are some committees where that definitely is not appropriate. Board of Review, for example, if we had the citizens reaching out to appointed members and trying to kind of convince a person to vote one way or the other on a project, redevelopment authority, same thing. So I know I'm kind of rambling with my question, but Director Folds, can you kind of give a little insight on that? Is that something that's being considered, or would you kind of propose something to council so we can talk about it as a policy discussion?
Well, I guess it's up to the council policy decision. I think most of the people appointed on commissions are, you know, public or out-facing, like it goes to the common council, we know who the person is that's appointed. I think the point of the Equal Rights Commission discussion was, they want to make sure that people know publicly that there is an Equal Rights Commission and that they're accessible. And I think with the website, we want to provide, you know, information and educate the public on what each board and commission's doing. I think we're trying to do that with all of our commissions. So I, I mean, it could be up to the commission how much information they want to disclose, and I think we obviously want to have the general information, what commissions do and what, what actions that they take for the council or for the city. And then when it comes to providing pictures or contact information, again, that's probably up to the commissioner and how comfortable they feel. So I don't know if you need to have a general policy for that, but I do think the intent of the Equal Rights Commission was, we're here to serve the community, we want to get our, our, our aware of who's on the commission and educate the community on what the services they provide. That's what I think the intent was.
Yeah, and I appreciate, and again, I think it's a, it's an idea worth considering. I think I commend that person for bringing that forward. It's something that I hadn't really considered. I just want to make sure we're being consistent and that we kind of, you know, you know, think of all things, including safety, you know, advocacy, what's appropriate, if there are commissioners, are they taking a position for the city of Green Bay in their role? And I think sometimes these commissions, if they're not properly, not just this commission but other boards, if they're not kind of like told on the front end, this is your role, kind of like what council members do. If I go to the media and say, the city of Green Bay this, the city of Green Bay that, I have to very clearly, through a code of conduct, say, my view represents one of 12 council members. This is not an official position of the city. So I'll just stress you, Director Folds, that you kind of hear, you know, to the heart of what I'm saying, that I'm not opposed to the idea, I just want a little consideration into all the factors related. The other point that I want to make, and this is directly in regards to housing, I think we all know that we have a housing crisis in the city of Green Bay, there's not a lot of available units, and if there is an available unit, the cost seems to be rather high. In fact, Fox 11 just posted something that caught my eye, and it said that, according to Zumper, which I'm not sure what that is, I'm sure it's a legitimate media source, but according to Zumper, the average rent for a one-bedroom in Green Bay is $795. So one good thing that the Equal Rights Commission's doing is they want to have a community conversation about housing, different people, how they're affected by housing. One thing that I want to make sure we're very cognizant of as a city is that we engage the landlord community in a positive manner. Sometimes a lot of ire and frustration could be directed towards landlords, like landlords need to do this, or landlords need to do that, and I think that's true in a lot of cases, but some of our landlords are barely getting by. We had a pandemic crisis where a lot of landlords were not getting paid for well over a year in rent, and they're using this opportunity to kind of get caught up on business losses that they have absorbed in other ways. So it is true that rent is going up, and hopefully, as a community, through ARPA and other tactics, we can find affordable housing, but we have to be very careful in our public messaging through the Equal Rights Commission that we'll hear a multiple, multitude of opinions, and when landlords come up to us and give their opinion on the business aspects of what they do, that we hear them as well. So, and again, as a professional courtesy, I'm sure that commission would do that, I just want that stated. Landlords are hurting right now, and it's not that they're making a fortune and pocketing it. Some of these landlords are facing real tough decisions, you know, fixing units, the rising cost of paint and lumber to repair things. It's tough out there in a lot of ways. That's all. So I'm in support of the motion to receive and place on file, or whatever the motion was. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Approve.
Alder, sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Kind of piggybacking a little on what Alder Burnett said, I mean, as far as the housing in the subcommittee that I was actually a part of, and I'm still doing research with them, but the county is looking at affordable housing, and it's really leaning on the landlord-tenant relationships. So if you're concerned about that, any of the Alders, I would suggest you talk to a director, Assistant Director Renner Wig about that. So I think there are some things that are going on as well. Just as an aside, you know, with all these committees and all the requests to have transparency, I agree with that. Maybe I'm missing something, but for example, I'm on the Landmarks Commission, and I rarely if ever see any, anything in council about that. And there may be other committees that are being left behind as well. I know we look at standing committees, but there are quite a few that aren't standing committees that we don't have any information on, or at least we have to dig further. So I think it's very important that we look at every committee that, you know, at least to have a report out on them. So I don't know if that needs a communication, or if that's just something Director Folds that you can look at. I'll be happy to talk to you about that, but maybe it's just a matter of just tweaking it a little bit. So that's my, that's my point.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. A motion to approve the report of the Equal Rights Commission. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Committee of the whole?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. We have a question from Alder Dorf.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're approving the list of unavailable election inspectors, poll workers nominated by the Democratic and Republican Parties of Brown County. I have a question for the clerk. Clerk Jeffries, how do you know that they are unavailable, or that they don't want to be poll workers?
Thank you very much, Alder, for asking that question. So we know this because when we get the list from the parties, lists, we then reach out to these individuals and say, hey, you know, you've been nominated by your party to serve as a poll worker, so would you like to serve as a poll worker? And some of the people, the people who you have before you tonight, had written back to us and said, no, they did not want to serve. And so the process for a party-nominated poll worker or election inspector is for the county first notified, be notified, and then approve that list, and then for me to provide that list to the Wisconsin Elections Commission. So we know this because we have this information, you know, a lot of times via a phone call, but then also in writing.
Thank you. And I also, I did notice that there were fairly equal numbers of Republican and Democrat people that, on this list, that decided that they didn't want to be poll workers. Are there any next steps that you take at this point, or are you done now with this?
Yes, thank you. So tonight, I would ask your approval of this list, and then I will need to direct this list to the Wisconsin Elections Commission with the document.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that clarification, Alder. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Report has been approved. Resolutions?
We should suspend the rules.
Second.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up these items for a roll call vote. That was seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin, and we will use the board.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote. Yes, thank you.
Those are adopted 12-0. Ordinance is first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules. Let his motion write.
Motion has been made to take items one and two up with one roll call vote. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. The ayes have it.
Motion to approve.
Motion to advance. Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it. Those items are advanced. Item three.
Second.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Request has been made to use the board.
Thank you. Just give me one moment.
And this is a motion to advance. Item three.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote. And Mr. Vanderlist? You? Here is your vote.
And that item is advanced, eight to four. Petitions and communications. Alder Burnett?
I submitted it to Clerk Jeffries earlier, but I want it to be read so the public's aware. To use, that's to Finance Committee, to use all unbudgeted, unspent 2021 revenue from the Cooperative Governance Agreement with the United Nation on items found in the 2022 Capital Improvement Plan as opposed to the suggested rebranding initiative. The rebranding initiative should then be considered during the 2023 city budget process, if it is worth pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, and we don't need a motion to refer because you've already submitted that, Alder?
Clerk Jeffries, is that everything's A-OK?
Yes, everything is in order. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone.